Washoe, who are we? Washoe County? I have so many people here today. Let's call to order the Washoe County Commission, Board of County Commissioners for February 27th. And I need to put glasses on because I can't read anything for some reason today. We also are meeting at the same time with the Library Board and the Truckee Meadows Fire Board. So we will start by asking our Chief Librarian, Mr. Jeff Scott, to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Okay, so we will ask the clerk to call order, and we have to call all three boards. And because we don't have name tags in front of the Library Board as the clerk or whoever is going to call your name, calls your name, would you please let the audience know which one you are? Madam Clerk.
Okay, so I will call the role for the Board of County Commissioners and the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District simultaneously, since you're all the same people.
Okay.
We've got Chair Marcia Burke Bigler.
Here.
Vice Chair Katie Jung.
Present.
Bob Lucy.
Here.
Von Hartung.
Present.
Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County Manager John Slaughter.
Present.
Chief Charles Moore.
Here.
Deputy District Attorney David Watts Viall.
Here.
And I'm Nancy Parent, your County Clerk. You have a quorum for both boards, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So are you going to call for the Library Board?
I can if you would like.
Yes, please.
Wendy Alderman, Chair.
Present.
Zanny Marsh, Vice Chair.
Present.
Ted Parkhill is absent for now. Jean Stose?
Here.
Derek Wilson?
Here.
You have a quorum for the Library Board.
Thank you. Mr. Manager.
Manager, next item is public comment. Comment, heredity, this item is limited to three minutes per person, may be trained minutes both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear a public comment during individual action items, and comment limited is limited to three minutes per person. And please, comments are made to the boards as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I have listed for public comment three names, Mr. Ron Hess we will start with. Good morning, Mr. Hess.
Good morning. Is this on?
I don't think it's on.
Hello, hello?
Yeah.
Just get closer. Good morning. I'm here in regards to the Washoe Public Lands Management Act that's been talked about over the last couple of years, and a series of meetings have been held over the last couple of years. We believe that the Fox Range and Pole Creek area should be removed from consideration as wilderness areas and returned to multiple land use management status. It would be a waste of resources and recreational opportunities to designate these areas as wilderness. Over a 15-plus year timeframe, the U.S. Bureau of Land Management developed through an environmental impact statement process, a rationale for areas that should be considered suitable and areas considered non-suitable for wilderness designation, and based on extensive analysis of the existing and more importantly, potential uses of that land. The Bureau of Land Management determined through this process that both the Fox Range and Pole Creek area should not be classified as wilderness. Accordingly, in subsequent BLM documents and maps, these areas have been shown as non-suitable for wilderness designation. The BLM definition of non-suitable reads in part, "As not appropriate and not acceptable for preservation and designation as wilderness based on an analysis of the existing and again, potential uses of the land." I'll be submitting today several attachments. Attachment one and two are in regards to the Fox Range and Pole Creek areas. They are summary text sections out of the Nevada Wilderness Study Area Notebook from the BLM Winemucca Field Office, April 2001. These documents summarize BLM findings for the Fox and Pole Creek areas. Please note that both recommend complete release of the entire area for uses other than designated wilderness area, or for other wilderness, uh, complete release, other, for uses other than designated wilderness areas. The third attachment is labeled Plate 12. It shows wind potential for the area and the clipped area, it is clipped from the potential resources associated with proposed roadless areas in Nevada produced by the Nevada Bureau of Mines and Geology. This is newer data that was not included in the BLM data. The Fox Range in this area is contained in a red outline. Note that the areas of the Fox Range and Pole Creek area have future potential for large-scale energy production that was not included in the original studies. Finally, wind energy along with other potential land uses such as metals, minerals, geothermal energy production, grazing, hunting, motorized and non-motorized backcountry activities, development of water resources as well as primitive and not-so-primitive camping and hiking adventures will all be possible in these areas if they are managed as multiple land use resources and not locked up in a dead-end wilderness classification. Please include this letter and my attachments as part of today's public record. I did want to get it on the public record while consideration was still going on on what areas will be considered wilderness in this project. And I want to thank you today for your time and consideration on this. Thank you.
Next on our list is Ms. Elise Weatherly.
Good morning, Elise Weatherly, Washoe County resident. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you. I was reminded by you guys this morning that I got a reminder from the library to go renew my card. So just being here is kind of a good reminder. And just as a personal note, I want to let you guys know, these guys already know this, the one thing that makes me angrier than anything is not being listened to and not being heard. So let's just do a little pretense. Let's pretend like I was in charge of millions of dollars for a local company. And we had to get that company into the right hands at the right time, to the right government agencies, to the right 401K. If I told my employees that we had to do this and they'd go, "You're not worth listening to," that would have cost the company a whole bunch of money. So I'm going to jump around in my little notes here because I've got so many things that came to light this morning. But what I wanted to know is, you guys, how is your investigation going? Have you recently polled the youth to see what they think about things? I've been doing that a lot lately, and it's surprising to me how many of those kids actually love the law of the land. We've got a lot of people that say we can do whatever we want and everything goes, right? But these kids are saying, "No, we don't want that anymore." What I was wondering too is, is they're, they're green people. These young people are going, "Why can't we let Tesla into this neighborhood, into this community, give the local businesses a chance to put up these solar panels, go green, advertise, and it would be good?" Well, doing a little research, it's because the Honorable Brian Sandoval, who used to be with Sierra Pacific, by the way, Nevada Energy, is opposing Tesla as hard as he can. And I understand that things from an economic standpoint, people want to make money, right? That's what we're all about, is making money. I remember a few months ago, you guys had a speaker come up here and go, "Where's our local power grid? If we, if something happens to this nation and to this area, where are we going to get power from?" Well, guess what? It's going to come from me here pretty quick in the future. I'm going to actually go take a risk and put some solar panels on my roof, and I will be helping my neighbors. If something happens, they will get power from me. So why don't we, as a community, step up and say, "Hey, you know, SNV Energy, stop trying to stand in the way. You're a Monproppety." I won't call him a monopoly, I'll call him a Monproppety. Warren Buffett, he charges us for his loans and stuff on these bills of ours. People don't know that because they don't take a close look. So that was the other thing. The other thing too, I was introduced to memes recently, and I thought they were pretty stupid because I thought they were these motivational, you know, things like Oprah Winfrey says, "Pull yourself up by your bootstraps." By the way, she should call herself a goddess, not a god. And if she's a goddess, then she will, she will never be fat, she will never have a bad relationship, she will never die, she will never sin because she's God. So, she's not. And the other thing is too, capital punishment. It's like, love covers a multitude of sins, right? But we'll let the murderer of Polly Claus just be living on the government agency because that covers a multitude of sin without looking in the Bible that says, "Hold them into account." Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly. Next, we have Mr. Bob Thomason.
Mr. Thomason has handed me some documents which I will place on the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good morning.
Morning. My name is Bob Thomason. I have some public input against the Washoe County Public Lands Bill. The Tahoe Rito Industrial Center will continue to grow. We can't stop that, and we don't want to, but we have a tiger by the tail. The 73,000 acres of Truckee Meadows open space public land slated to be sold to developers are a long way from the industrial center, and the result will be epic gridlock. The existing rightaways are far less than a modern highway's required 400 feet. A huge taxpayer expense will be required to improve infrastructure, plus imminent domain rulings to confiscate people's homes. Not a solution to your, that leads to your stated goal of a sustainable and safe, secure, and healthy community. Greatly increased fire protection capacity is another requirement. Washoe County does not have the resources for this expansion into BLM land in a manner that will not devastate the quality of life in the Truckee Meadows. The bill is a stone age solution to a modern problem reminiscent of a puzzled and confused King Kong swatting ineffectively at modern airplanes. There is no rational connection between the disastrous local public land sales and the undesirable requirement for 500,000 acres of new Washoe County wilderness. The Friends of Nevada Wilderness told me that they may even pull their support for this short-sighted, unintelligent bill. A sustainable, long-term, yet challenging solution is expanding the Reno-Sparks metropolitan area through the I-80 corridor to the east, placing new development closer to the industrial center. Expanding the metropolitan area to the east is a big project on a much higher level than the presently proposed bill. It will give Washoe County, Washoe County an opportunity to be part of the industrial growth, not just an overpopulated bedroom community. It will give you the opportunity to live up to your own loftily stated purpose of being the social, economic, and policy leadership force in Nevada and the Western United States. The initial hurdles will require the best from you. No time in my allotted three minutes to present them. Once the challenges are overcome, the results will continue to be better for all with passing years. The existing proposed bill is the easy way out and will, and will be relatively simple to initially implement. The difference is that the ruinous consequences will increase with each passing year until the Truckee Meadows as we know it is buried beneath a bubbling mass of asphalt and suffering humanity. We have one chance to get this right. Anyone can turn Reno into another San Jose. It takes real leadership to promote intelligent growth. The disastrous consequences of the proposed bill-
Thank you, Mr. Thomason.
-are irreversible and lasting. We can't change our minds and go back. People tell me that your handlers-
Thank you, Mr. Thomason.
...will not allow you to escape their grasp. You have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to fix them wrong by providing real leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Thomason.
You can paint it on your walls. A real legacy you can actually convert to.
We, seeing no more public comment, thank you very much, Mr. Thomason. Seeing no more public comment, we will close public comment and bring it back to the board.
And for the record, Madam Chair, can we note that Mr. Parkhill has arrived for the Library Board?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Manager, I believe we are moving four to later Commissioners and-
No, four's, that's already been moved on the agenda.
Oh, it's, oh, I'm looking at-
The Commissioner and Manager's announcements have already been rearranged on the published agenda. So the next item is item four, which is presentation of the Washington County Library Annual Report for fiscal year 2016, 2017.
Super. So I'm looking at an old agenda, ladies and gentlemen, sorry. Mr. Watts Viall, did you have something to add?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I could. Items four and five are only being heard by the Board of County Commissioners and the County Library Board of Trustees. They're not Board of Fire items.
Correct. Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Scott.
Good morning. We have a presentation coming up here on your screen.
Could we have the presentation up on the screen, please? Do we not have the presentation? No, you don't. Okay, so we don't have it in.
All right, then we'll swing it. You have it in your packet. Okay, you can follow along that way.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Oh, thanks. All right, thanks. Commissioner, Vice Chair, thank you. So can we have the, Vice Chair Jung is going to bring down the one from our packet. So if we could have the screen perfect.
Okay.
There. Good job.
That'll work. All right, well, thank you, everyone.
Yeah, she's totally in control.
Yes.
She keeps me in line. Okay, Mr. Scott, now it's your turn. And I don't think we need that speaker timer up there either. We're going to let him have more than three minutes. Oh, that's okay.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you, Commissioners and Trustees. I'm happy to be in front of you today. I'm Jeff Scott, your Library Director, here to present your annual report. So, one of the big items we had this year that we accomplished was our new strategic plan. The State Library mandates, we have a new strategic plan every two years. So this year, we did things a little bit differently. We had our branch managers and managing librarians go out and interview stakeholders in the community and talk about what their needs are and what's important to them. Oftentimes in a library, if you talk to someone about a library, they say they don't feel confident about what a library does. They can't really comment on it, when really, we want to find out what the community needs. So we ask them questions such as, you know, if your community was utopia, what would it look like? What are the barriers in its way? What can we do about it as a library? And so the, after synthesizing all that information, up to over 50 community stakeholder interviews, we have these initiatives. The Washington County is a community hub. Washington County Library is a community hub. Washington County Library grows young readers. Washington County Library provides opportunities to express creativity. Washington County Library wants residents to know their community. So the general feel of that is that the library, you're coming in for multiple reasons. Not just for checking out books, you're coming in for classes, you're coming in for community events, you're coming in for controversial talks to hear more about your community. We're growing younger readers, so early literacy is a big initiative for us, zero to five. We want to help get kids school-ready and ready to read at grade level by third grade. Provides opportunities to express creativity, talk about maker spaces there, STEM education. That's really important. School District doesn't always have funding to provide that level of STEM education. The library can step in to do that. And then we want residents to know their communities. So a lot of times, we ask people about what's going on in the community. They often don't know. There's a lot of great resources in the community that we want to advertise. So that's when we want to help everyone with that. And this gives more of a detail of the major goals and objectives that we have for the library. So that's in your packet. You probably read it better in your packet than you can up there. Want to get into some of the accomplishments we had this year. So going in with that sort of planning philosophy, the facilities community hub is one of the aspects we're working on. We renovated the North Valleys Library at the end of 2016, early 2017. We negotiated the Tequino Trust, which is $900,000 donation to the library to use for renovation of the Downtown Reno Library, Sparks Library, Northwest Libraries. The county has also had a match to that funding as well. That match is fluid. We're working on the Tequino match, the county match, and also grant-funded match. So hopefully, if all the money comes in, it'll probably be about a $3 million project for all three facilities. We implemented CRV Library a seven-days-a-week service. All our libraries close consistently, consistently at 6:00 PM. So if you want to know how late the library is open, you know, we're open at least until 6:00 PM, sometimes later, if you check your schedules. And then Duncan Trainer, we have a five-day-a-week service, so that includes Sunday service, one to five. We have a good partnership with the Northern Nevada Literacy Council that comes in to provide programming there as well. It looks more impressive. It's in the PowerPoint, so. So that's our North Valleys renovation. So we opened that up when we renovated it, so it's a larger children's area. When you first walk in, it's all children's. You have a lot of space to hang out, to be with your children, to hang out. You have storytimes in that space. The results of this new renovation has increased circulation at the branch. In particular, we saw a 20% increase in children's circulation. So more children are checking out books because of this renovation, which is really one of our goals in these projects. On the bottom there is some of our schematics for the Downtown Reno Library renovation. The outside here was paid for the Tequino Trust funds and also we're working on a state historic preservation office grant to help beautify the outside of the Downtown Reno Library. Oftentimes, when you go, you're driving up Virginia, make a right on Liberty, and you just see two dumpsters and a bunch of trees, and you want to say, "This is the library." And we want it to make it the grand dam of downtown. So that includes some banners, more lighting, a flagpole, a more inviting outdoor artwork as well to help let people know that it's a library downtown. All right. So other services, the children. So we, this last year, children's library cards are now fine-free. So if you're a child of the library card, checking out children's materials, you won't accrue fines on those items. We also have a relationship with the Washington County School District. We have MOU for library cards. So when you enroll your child into the school, you'll get a little form saying, "Do you want to give your child a library card?" Click yes, and your child will be issued a library card. So easiest way you can get a library card now with the school district. We increased after-school hours at Verdi, so we're now three days a week at Verdi instead of just one day a week. So it's three days a week. Lot more traffic coming in because of that. We're using the community room there with Endow. It's one of the pictures in the presentation there. Great kickoff for that. We're increasing our support for the partnership collections. That's the collections that are in our school libraries. So $2,000 a year to help buttress those collections to make sure they're having up-to-date and fresh materials. We've had training by the youth staff of the children's cabinet. So Marty Alcos with the children's cabinets provide a lot of enhanced training to help with the "I'm Ready for K" presentation. And so the "I'm Ready for K" is a workbook the children's cabinet puts out. And so when you work through that workbook with your child, who's a four-year-old, they'll be ready for kindergarten if they go all the way through that workbook. And so we have those available at our public libraries. We're distributing to our early literacy providers and partners. That's one of the big things that we're trying to do to get kids school-ready. We also have the Give the Gift of Reading. We launched that first year last year. So we raised $30,000 for children's books in its first year. So, good stuff going on. So Maker Services, Express Creativity. We're allocating more funding for Maker Services, reallocating our current budget. So now you have $30,000 for Maker Services, including support for idea boxes and for innovation in STEM education. We also have an LSTA grant in the mix for Digital Maker Space on the fourth floor of the Downtown Reno that we're renaming the Quad to help more STEM activity and fixed clinics. We have new idea boxes, and we had, we hosted the Makers Unite Roundtable that we asked all the makers in the community, from the generator forward, to talk about what their needs are in the community to help support makers and STEM education. So technology. We're enhancing our coding camps. We launched our coding camps end of 2016. So every library now has a Chromebook lab, oh, that's better, a Chromebook lab with eight Chromebooks so that kids can come in, and through a partnership with NC Labs and the State Library, they can come in, learn to code. There's little projects that they can do to learn how to do the coding, and then they get little certificates when they pass certain initiatives. We're also rewarded the Automated Materials Handler Grant, so that's part of the RFAD project to automate our handling of the materials. So the goal is, is when you put a book in the drop, it automatically gets checked in, it then gets sorted, and someone comes, takes it out of the cart, and shelves it. So there's no longer having to grab the book, bring it all the way to the back, check it in, and then re-shelve it. It saves a lot of time and effort with that, and our hope is that we can expand services as a result of time saved. Okay. And then operational, we launched our Discover and Go partnership. So that's a partnership with the museums, Nevada Museum of Art, Terry Lee Wells Discovery Center Museum, and the Fleishman Panetarium. We also just got a commitment yesterday from the National Automobile Museum. So that's a Discover and Go program. So with the library card, you go into our Discover and Go platform, and you can download a pass. And then with that pass, you can get anywhere from a free admission or two free admissions, depending on the museum. And so that's a partnership with Northern California Libraries. Discover and Go is a platform that does Northern Nevada museums, but also Northern California museums. So likewise, you can use that for local museums. If you're traveling to Northern California, you can use that for museums in Northern California too. So if you want to go to the Asian Art Museum, you want to go Legion of Honor, the DeYoung Museum, you have that option through this program as well, all with the Washington County Library Card. Let's see. And then we had, we hosted our Nevada Humanities Lit Crawl kickoff. So we had everyone come together to host a brunch before we launched into the area. One of the great things about that is a lot of times, the people who are hosting the Lit Crawl don't see each other every day. So they actually got to get together, strategize, got to meet the author, Adam Johnson, and then go out and be part of the crawl. So it's a great way to kick off the crawl at the Downtown Reno Library. Hosted the Holland Project as well. Over the summer, they had High and Dry Project. We had a concert in the bomb shelter. So we had probably about 700 people wanting to come for that, and we had to kind of usher them through the process. But that was really fun. That really got a good engagement from the community with that. That's very large there, okay. And then recently, we hosted the TEDx just in January. So the UNR puts on their TEDx program, TED Talks. They hosted that at the Reno Sparks Convention Center, but we had an opportunity to do a livestream, and that's from a suggestion from our trustee, Zanny Marsh, putting that together. And so we were able to do the livestream. We renovated the auditorium, put in a 4K projector, and was able to host the livestream for that. So people who couldn't afford to go to the TEDx, TED Talk, or didn't have time for whatever reason, they can come to the library, and they can get in for free. We had free tickets, but they can do that for free, and that's through partnership with UNR and TEDx. So really happy about how that turned out. Great way to get all together. Okay, and then operational. So we passed our technology plan, passed our strategic plan. We're now Child Internet Protection Act compliant, CIPA compliance is a precursor for getting E-Rate funding. And so that means all children's computers are filtered, and then adults are filtered, but they have the option to unfilter that, and that's the federal law for Child Internet Protection Act. So that allows us to apply for federal grants for computers and technology. So we're applying for E-Rate right now, so that can give us up to 60% discount on our internet connection, and also can provide up to $1.1 million for technology in our libraries. So that's saving the county money by being part of this process and also being in compliance with federal law. We've increased our collection development budget over the years, so almost a million dollars with the Tequino Trust on top of that. It actually goes over a million dollars for the next three years. The Tequino Trust adds $100,000 opening day collection on top of each renovation. So for the next three years of that funding holds steady, you'll have over a million dollars for our collection development for our books and our libraries. So some personal notes. I'm on, I was elected to the United Way of Northern Nevada and Sierra's Board. So we're working on the campaign for grade-level reading, getting third graders reading by grade level. Our goal is to get that by 2020. If we don't hit that goal, third graders will start to be held back after 2020 if they don't pass their proficiency test. So this is a really important initiative for the United Way and the library to get kids reading at grade level. I was also elected to the Nevada Library Association as President, so that term will start in 2019. The good news with that is that we can bring the NLA Conference to Reno. So we have Downtown Reno of that. We also participated in Library Legislative Day and got $500,000 to the SB 549 for state libraries across the state, and gave us funding, or something that we have locally as well. So kind of scoot through the rest of that, so you can go to the next slide probably. I'm running out of time. And so the last slide, so the financial support we get from the community and from grants, donations, is really tremendous. We want to thank especially the Commissioners that not only do you help support the library through a general fund budget, but also all Commissioners have provided some special district funds as well, from anywhere from STEM education to renovations and variety of things, summer reading program as well. And we really appreciate that kind of support. Getting that kind of support in the spring to help us every summer makes that program that much better. We also have support from the Friends of the Washington County Library System, so we'll have that on your next agenda item. They give anywhere from $120,000 to $145,000 every year that supports summer reading, books, technology, and other library needs. Give the Gift of Reading, we have every year, so it's November, December, every year. We launched that to help buttress our children's collection and increase the number of books in there. And we recently received the Tequino Trust to help that, and we're using that as leverage to get funds from other donors in the community, as well as for grant writing as well. So I want to thank the Commissioner for that. Okay, I think that's the last slide. So thank you for taking the time. Sorry for the technical difficulties, but if you write your packet, you have all the information. So happy to answer any questions that you may have.
One of the buzzwords lately is "Maker Services." Would you explain a little bit more about what that means?
Well, it's based in STEM and STEAM education, so science, technology, engineering, mathematics. So we're trying to prepare children for the next generation of jobs, of work. When we go to the UNR Engineering Department, we ask them about some of the needs in the community. They said probably less than 1% of our kids would be able to apply and get into the engineering program at UNR. And so that's a big gap that we want to start to close, to get children exposed to these kinds of concepts earlier. So if they get interested in it, they can start going on that path to become scientists, engineers, mathematicians, that sort of thing. So that's kind of what, that's kind of what's tied into that, is to tap into that creativity. When you talk about STEAM, it's always that creative, artistic design- When you talk about STEAM, it's always that creative artistic design combined with the technology piece. So that's always the Steve Jobs kind of concept, the DaVinci concept behind that. So they have those things all combined. So you have something that's technologically advanced but also very elegant in design as well. So we're trying to prepare the kids for that future.
Thank you. Commissioner Herman.
I just wanted to thank you for putting up with my nagging on Verdi, and thank you for getting that done.
We appreciate the support and the input that really helps us, and I think changes the hours really enhance it, so thank you for that.
Commissioners, any other, Commissioner Lucy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Scott, I have a quick question. You know, one of the things that we brought up at our recent board retreat was, you know, we want to be innovative and start thinking of some innovative ways to, you know, bring the county into the next, whatever that looks like, next landscape. What is the, what do you propose that the library and the system, library system do to help improve readership, improve, what are some of the innovative things that you guys are working on at the library?
Well, a lot of the maker services we provided are very innovative. We're looking at trying to connect. One of the great things we had recently was the Robotics Club at Bennett South Valleys and the support they got from the library to help train that. And you saw the presentation a number of months ago to see that. So that's, we're really trying to plant the seed for kids in our community to do things like that. And so a lot of times it seems on the surface very basic, not as innovative, but you're really planting that seed for the future. So getting, having partnerships with early literacy centers and preschools and getting kids ready to learn, getting a, reading at grade level enhances that future. And then getting the maker services where the school district can't provide that as well. So we're looking at filling the gaps, what the community needs, and making sure we can do all we can for them. So that's kind of our first goal. Innovation comes from that, and we start building that and growing that, and we see that the tree blossom. That's what we're hoping for.
Now, have you had problems in some of the, you know, outside areas outside of downtown in regards to outreach to the communities and making sure that they're aware of all the programming and different things that are going on in the library?
I think we're, we have a good handle on outside of the downtown area. I think North Valleys is probably the biggest deficit that we have.
Hang on, just, just one minute, Mr. Scott. Mr. Watzvial.
I apologize, Mr. Scott. For the record, Dave Watzvial with the DA's office, this is listed as a presentation. It's not listed as an action item, and some of the questions are going to start getting, they're starting to range a little bit afield of what the actual report covers, including things about future actions. So the board would be cautioned not to ask too many questions. Typically, presentations are a presentation, not necessarily a back-and-forth. Neither of them have, on either agenda has it styled as a discussion item either. So that sort of limits the interactions that you can have.
Thank you, Mr. Watzvial.
Okay. Never mind.
We'll just close that at that point. Vice Chair Jung, I think you, who is our representative to the library board and we...
No, I'm not.
Oh, aren't you?
I thought it's Commissioner Hartung.
Oh, Commissioner Hartung.
No, it's John.
Oh, it's John Slaughter. It's John Slaughter. All right, well, good.
But I, but I do love the library.
I know.
Very much. And I think that the library enhances our quality of life in a way that no other county services do. So thank you, Mr. Scott, and the library board of trustees, who are the boss of the library. We have no oversight over Mr. Scott, and that was something I had to learn pretty quickly when I first started. And it's, it's for a good reason, because you don't want people that are running for office being in charge of the access to information, because then you also bring in partisanship with that. So I love that this library stands alone and by themselves, and we can't boss them around. And so I like that. So I want to go through a couple of things that you said, and I'm going to try to stay within the, the way this has been noticed. Maybe next time we'll notice it a little bit differently. When you say you have meeting room space with relevant equipment and resources, do you charge for that?
We, we were charging, we are charging for the room right now. It's $20 for the meeting room. Some of our surveys, we came back with the strategic plan, said that they would prefer that that item be waived, and so we're probably going to bring that to the trustees for consideration to, to start to remove that fee. That was implemented during the recession to see of fundraising kind of pieces, but we found there's more effort, staff effort to try to put that together than it would be for the revenue we receive.
So maybe just a suggestion, only waive it for nonprofits?
Sure.
Okay. And then I love that you want to turn the downtown Reno into the grand dom of the downtown, but I do remember when I was a liaison to the board that the sustainability of that building was in question because of HVAC. And, I mean, I don't want to get rid of the building. I love the building. I love all the plants. I think it's one of the most beautiful buildings that we have. I think one of the biggest mistakes this county did years ago was get rid of all of our plants, especially in the Board of Health. So what is the new feasibility studies of that? Is that, Watzvial, is that okay? Or should I, should this be later? Questions for later? Or go to a meeting, Kitty Jung?
Well, I never give direction to county commissioners as a rule. Just try to offer up my opinion. That was more of a comment towards the last part where you were asking me to tell you to do something. The problem with it is we don't really have it stylized as a discussion item. It's a, it's a presentation.
I won't discuss, I'll just, I'll just say some statements, and he doesn't need to say anything back. How about that?
That should work.
Okay. But listen, we did not want to be caught with open meeting law violations. We see what happens with the school district with that. You never get out from underneath of it.
We're very careful.
So what I do want to say is I love that kids get library cards immediately because you know how much kids love a card. It's a credit card to them, basically. They're like their mom and dad, and I think that encourages them to use said credit card at the libraries. I know I felt that way as a kid. And the partnership that you have with the school district, I think it goes back, Mr. Manager, to shared services and fiscal equity. We do a lot, even to enhance the downtowns of Reno and Sparks. And I don't think we get enough credit as a major funder and, and people that we do the heavy lifting. And I did see your, what's it called? Discover and Go partnerships, and I pushed it out on my Facebook, too, but you know, you can get free tickets to the DeYoung Museum in San Francisco, which is, like, I mean, that rivals an East Coast museum as well. So I think that is really great, and I'm assuming you're partnering with Sundance Books in your humanities walk, et cetera?
Yeah, that's right.
And I would go back to as well, if we're going to put all this money into the downtown library, again, we are enhancing the downtown of Reno, and we should talk about how, and perhaps if your board agrees, maybe you should be going to the City Council of Reno and the City Council of Sparks and giving them this whole presentation about how much the library, Washtau County system of libraries really does enhance the downtowns and bring such a value to their downtown. And that you're bringing the conference in Reno is another economic development driver that I hope the RSCBA is aware of. And that is all, I think you have a great board. We have the original first female ever to be on the county commission, Jean Stoss, leading your board, so I'm sure you're great. She was my first finance manager as an elected official as well, and she's, she's strict, and I like that. So, Mr. Scott, thank you so much for all you do. Thank you, library board, for being here this morning and for caring enough to make this such a great community to live in with a rich library service. And I am a big user of your library, and I try to go to different ones all the time. Oh, one more thing I want to tell you. I love the Lucky Day. Do you, are you still doing Lucky Days?
Yes.
Oh, that's my favorite thing. You can only get two of them because they're, you know, like the hottest book in the world. You can only get two of those at a time, and you can only have them for a certain amount of time. And then I have to tell you, too, my dad is very excited because he likes Baladucci. What's the name of this action writer?
Yeah, Baladucci, yeah.
Baladucci. He waited for three months, and he got a brand-new, you know, it's just number one of the best seller. He had to wait three months in line, but that, he's 81 years old. They don't want more books in their home, so that he gets to go. And I'm not saying, I don't want more books in my home either. And so this, my whole family enjoys a great deal of the library, and I, I think it's one of the shining stars in all of Northern Nevada, so I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Jung. We appreciate all your comments. All of us support the library, and we appreciate the report very much. And I will turn this over to your very important chair and let her run the rest of your meeting.
Thank you, Jeff. Moving on to item number five, we are, it's a presentation of the, from the Friends of the Washtau County Library System to the library for $120,000. I think we've mentioned a number of times how unique and important the Friends of the Washtau County Library are to our system, and they stand heads and shoulders above almost any other Friends of the Library organization in the country. So how do we want to do this?
We have some of our friends here, and we have the, we have the big check as well for the picture opportunity. So we want to thank the Friends for their support.
Photo opportunity? How do we do this?
And our cameraman is coming.
Okay.
Thank you so much. I'm Dan Irwin, the president of the Friends of the Washtau County Library System, and I'd like to thank the many people responsible for us coming up with this extraordinary amount of money, year after year after year. There are 671 members, people who pay just to support the library system to the Friends. Our Board of Directors, of which I am president, and we're all members, too. That's required. We'd like to thank the book sale steering committee. Those are the nameless people who go around lugging hundreds of pounds of books all around so that you can buy them. And we'd like to thank anyone who bought a book from us. Our next sale is the week after next. And, and I'd like to thank you, our county commissioners, some of whom have donated some of their discretionary funds to the Friends of the Library. So thank you all very much.
Okay, and could we get a picture?
Hit it, Anna.
Yeah, let's go down. How about everybody comes down front? That's a good idea.
All right, everybody look right here. Here we go, in three, two. We're good.
Okay. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is an action item for the library board.
Yes.
On this item, not for the commission.
Okay.
So they'll come back to the commission as a donation on a future consent.
Madam Chair, if we could, it's listed as an action item for the Board of County Commissioners. On the library board, it is not listed as an action item. And for that reason, the library board isn't going to be able to take formal action on this. They'll have to re-agendize it and make the actual acceptance of it later. The BCC's item doesn't say anything about taking any kind of an action item, other than it was listed as an action item. So it looks like there's probably no action to take at this time.
Okay, since it's, since it says for possible action, we really don't have to take any action on it.
Well, the BCC, I should have clarified when I said board. The BCC doesn't have any specific action listed in its board item.
Okay, super. And you guys are going to have to re-agendize it for, because it doesn't list on your agenda, so, okay. I'll turn it back over to you.
All right. And I don't know if there are any other members of the Friends in the audience, if they would just stand and let us acknowledge them, or you're the only one? Okay, thank you. We're never sure. Moving on to the final item, which is time for public comment, and, sorry, any discussion?
I, okay, there we go. I, I will call the public comment. I have Ms. Norma Havens listed.
Actually, mine is for the next item.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Madam Chair, just to be clear, is this a...
Public comment for both the Board of County Commissioners and the library board, or just the library board?
I believe it was just for the library board.
Yes.
Because we're trying to be efficient in terms of multiple groups. And with no public comment, I believe I can turn it back over to you.
Okay. So the library board then is, can step down, and you're in recess? I mean, you're not in recess. You, you are...
Adjourned.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
You're done. Get out of here.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Watzvial.
Here's a board comment at number seven for the library board.
I have it crossed off.
Okay, but it's listed on ours, so we do have a public comment.
I have, I was going to say, I have the library board of trustees' agenda that shows that it is for a board comment.
That's fine. So before we adjourn, is there any comment from the library board of trustees?
Okay.
Now we can formally adjourn?
Yes.
Thank you. We are adjourned.
Right. We will take a very brief recess while the library board has the opportunity to step away. So we'll be in recess for five minutes.
All right.
All right, we will come back into session, and Commissioner Lucy, please note that Commissioner Lucy has stepped away for a minute. And we also, I also need to note for the record that Commissioner, Vice Chairman Jung is going to have to step out at 10:30. And so we will get through as much of this fire board agenda as we can before she has to step out, so. In that case, we are on to, Mr. Manager, we're on to number eight.
We should be on item six, actually.
Item six.
Should be the next item. Yes.
Okay. Try to put my glasses on.
Madam Chair, for the record.
Yes.
I believe you're on the fire board.
Oh, we are on fire board.
Which is at item four.
No, I'm sorry.
And then on the BCC agenda, you're at item six.
I got it.
And your meeting is both the BCC...
Okay.
Your meeting is both the BCC and the fire board.
So are we on the fire board? Are we, we've already done public comments, so we're moving on to number four on the fire board agenda.
Correct.
Okay. In that case, we'll turn it over to Chief.
President, I have a simple direction to staff regarding regional dispatch using automatic vehicle location, AVL, and fire service delivery considerations. I'm pleased to announce that yesterday we launched the Enhanced Automatic Aid with the City of Sparks, and wanted to talk a little bit about how that issue came into being. There was actually a car accident on Pyramid, Pyramid Highway that through a series of errors neither jurisdiction went to because of the...
Oh, goodness.
Immediately responded to because of the problems of communication between the two. And the fire chief in Sparks at the time and I said, this isn't right. We've got to fix this. So that led to the, the next logical and necessary idea was to just send the closest unit to the, to the vehicle accident or any call, regardless of jurisdiction. So this was a long time in coming. We, the City of Sparks had to upgrade to Tiburon, which took some many, many months. When we did an upgrade of Tiburon, it corrupted, the upgrade corrupted the ability for one dispatch agency to clone a call to the other. So that's why it took two years. It really didn't take two years of discussion. It really took two years for the implementation to happen. But nevertheless, we're alive. And in my six years here, I have seen plenty of opportunity where the closest fire response, emergency response could go but didn't go because we're only sending resources based on jurisdiction, unless there's a specific mutual aid call. Well, you're aware that automatic aid does apply to structure fires and for brush fires, but it does not apply to any other call, particularly EMS calls for priority one. So we've seen, I have seen in this community where people have had priority one emergencies, which are eminently life-threatening. And the closest unit has been just a few hundred feet away, and they've not been dispatched. So this afternoon, there is a meeting between City of Reno Chief, City of Sparks Chief, Dean Dow of REMZA, and myself to talk about how we can take some steps moving forward to this. I mentioned at the last TM meeting that a group of us went to City of Las Vegas to understand how they do it, and I think it's amazingly simple in how they do it. Nevertheless, I think where this solution begins is in dispatch. We have talked about the growth of the community and how we're going to handle all of these calls that are going to happen as our population grows. A consolidated dispatch is going to be key into that system. Here you see a chart which has been prepared for me by Heather Kurwin of the Health District, and she did very, very good work here. Priority ones are life-threatening, priority two are eminently life-threatening, and P3s are not life-threatening. And then there's an omega determination that's not listed here, it's, has zero acuity. So we've talked about P3s. We've done a very, very good job of educating the public, when you think you have a medical emergency to call 911. People have no other way of accessing emergency healthcare except by calling 911. But quite often in P3 calls, it's very, it could be argued that you don't need to send a fire truck and an ambulance to these calls. But nevertheless, when you see the breakdown of the times that we are responding a firetruck, lights and siren to a medical emergency that's not really needing a firetruck, lights and siren, we're going 1,370 times last year. So with a consolidated dispatch, and if we had the EMD process, which is a medical, emergency medical dispatch, where the caller is interrogated and asked a series of questions, we can determine whether they're life-threatening or not life-threatening. The problem with the way the dispatch works now is that comes into a 911 call taker, which is at Par Boulevard. It's determined to be a medical emergency. Our dispatcher gets very, very limited information as to what the nature of the medical emergency is. That call gets transferred where it's, where the caller is interrogated a little bit more, and finally determined after some questions whether or not it's a P3, P2, or P1. We have to get out the door immediately in the event that it's a priority one, we can't waste time waiting for this dispatch process to happen. And this process of transferring calls from our PSAP to REMZA, REMZA comes back to us, I think we've all recognized as executives of our organizations, that that's not a good way of doing business. It slows the process down, and it doesn't send the closest unit to the scene of the emergency. So, the next steps, I think, of course, are meeting and strategizing how we can fix this. I do want to call attention to the county study of dispatch that was presented to you in March 7th, 2017, that called for and studied a consolidated dispatch. I'll even take you back to, I think it was 2012, when TriDADA did the study, and said most of the problems within the EMS system are dispatch-related. So we keep getting back to this issue of dispatching as being the impediment to really getting service out the door quickly in an appropriate way, not over responding, not under responding, but the appropriate level of service. So, again, most of the technology already exists to be able to do this, what we need to do is consolidate the four dispatch centers that we have in the region down to one, and run the dispatch process out of one PSAP, that's my opinion. So by the time we have another TM board meeting, I'll be able to respond and update the board on the results of our meeting this afternoon with my colleagues, and see what the next steps might be going forward. So I understand that the city may also want to discuss regional fire in these discussions. I want to say that regional fire can look a lot of different ways. And in our relationship now that we have with Sparks, I would have to say that we're doing regional fire with Sparks. It would work, it would work as if, the same way as if we were one agency. But we're sending the closest unit to the scene of the emergency. So there are different ways that regional fire can look, and the model that I just talked about with the City of Sparks is the model that many, many jurisdictions use. It's used in Southern Nevada, it's used extensively in Southern California, Northern California, and in fact, AVL and closest unit dispatching is really a best practice throughout the United States. So that's where we need to get to with respect to regional fire, in my opinion, that it doesn't necessarily need to look like a political consolidation, and one budget and a new board, and all of this complication in terms of how it's going to be financed, how it's going to be governed. Back in Colorado, where I came from, I merged eight separate fire districts and three municipalities that all had firepowers into one district, and that was enormously, enormously complicated. It took 15 years. It can be done, but where it really starts is understanding what level of service that you want, how much that's going to cost, and doing a five-year budget to understand, if you go into a regional fire service delivery that looks like one fire department, there's a lot of moving pieces to that, and there's a lot to understand. So it's my belief that going from there, where we're at now, to a regional fire department is a heavy lift. And we can do things now in order to improve service to the citizens through simple decisions like consolidating dispatch, like having agreements to do closest unit dispatching between agencies like we've done with Sparks, and start there. That seems to be the logical place to start. So what I would ask from the board, if there are discussions, or desires to have discussions from the city about regional fire, that you give me some, some direction on what position I may represent for the board. I've never heard the board say that you're afraid of talking about regional fire conceptually. But of course, there are very, very big impediments in the way with respect to what the city believes it ought to look like, and what this board believes it ought to look like. So with that, I'll take any questions, any...
I will go to Vice Chair Jung first.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I have a legal question, I think this is for District Attorney Watzvial. What is the liability of agencies when the closest don't respond in a life-threatening emergency? What is the liability from the family? Should something untoward happen, and they are smart enough, or been in government long enough to figure out that this has happened, who's liable, and to what extent?
Well, without going too far into a hypothetical, the broad rule is that the provision of fire services is a public duty that's owed to the public in general, not to any individual homeowner.
So everybody would be liable?
No. Under the public duty doctrine, a homeowner doesn't generally have a right to proceed against a fire agency unless there's some level of negligence.
Wouldn't it be negligent if somebody is just across the street and they don't reply because the negligent dispatcher didn't alert lights and sirens to the life-threatening emergency across the street?
Well, again, we're getting into hypotheticals, and we can evolve the hypothetical a lot of different ways, and, you know, under the circumstance that you provided, there's nothing that indicates that the one, the entity that was closest who wasn't notified should have done anything.
But well, dispatch didn't notify him.
Somebody can't be required to go to something that they weren't, didn't receive notice of.
Okay, what I'm trying to get to is, sorry, that didn't work, that line of questioning, is the true liability, if somebody were to sue, and I would, if it was my parents or my husband, and I knew somebody was right across the street that could have, oh, yes, I would. And I think that that is one thing we should be using, carrot, stick, and that we're going to start reporting that, making that, it is a public record anyways, that people are not responding in life and safety issues, which is their public duty, that they're sworn to do. That is what I would use going into this, getting some different, not different, I'm not disagreeing because I never went to law school, even though I play one on TV, getting some different scenarios, going back in case law, and saying, "Hey, listen Reno, hey, listen Sparks, we're all in this with, hey, dispatch, hey, REMZA, and if we get sued, we are, we are going to spread the blame, not absorb the blame," as we often do at the county. I think we're the favorite place to sue. And this would be a good reason to sue, and let me tell you something, we would all drop and settle, because you would never want to go to trial on something like this. So I think, Mr. Chief, what I would do going in today, because you're asking for direction today, is say that all these agencies need to explore that, their lawyers need to talk to each other, and figure out if there's a diffusion of responsibility or sole responsibility, because, I'll tell you this, this is the basic thing we do, this is, this is primitive government. And if we can't figure out who to dispatch when somebody is having a life-threatening emergency, and they sit there, as you said, and nobody showed up, I'd own this county if it was my dad or my mom, I would. And I would never stop, it'd be a national issue, I'd create my own nonprofit and find another job through it, through the tragedy. But I really think that's where we need to start from, is, because that's what gets people at the table, is liability and money. And not, clearly, it's not because of morality, because we're not getting people at the table because that's the basic moral right thing to do. And clearly, it's jurisdiction, but I think if you diffuse that jurisdiction, I think people would speak a little bit differently about who's going to be pinged and who is not going to be pinged to respond. And it could, we could go back where everybody just shows up because they're listening, which is such a waste of money, and wear and tear on the vehicles, et cetera. This needs, and this, you referenced circa 2012, let me tell you something, when I first got on the Board of Commissioners, in, oh my God, August of 2010, we had a presentation of a fire study that was done about regionalization and how does it work, and it always came back to dispatch, and closest should respond, that's best practices, and unfortunately, we have never been able to get any traction since we deconsolidated. Now, I'm not saying I'm for consolidation, I'm okay with regionalization, but I've said over and over again to these agencies that would like to, which we know is best practice, really, we should all be one fire agency, and I know it costs money to do it because there is a provision in the law that the, and dispatch should be a consolidated function as well, but there is a provision in law, and I agree with it, with the NRS, which is, people that work in police or fire, should we consolidate? They get the best benefits of all that, they call it cherry picking, I don't like that word for it, I think that's more of a political word than the strength of what, why they have bargained for that. Because ultimately, when, if you did regionalize, you would save money, even if they had the best health insurance from Reno, they had the best wage from Sparks, I'm just making this up, I don't know the wages and health insurance. And for this commissioner, I am not interested in talking about full consolidation until both regions that we're looking at, and forget about Tahoe right now, even though they should probably, and the airport, but the airport doesn't want to play because they get special funds by being an airport fire service. But if we are going to regionalize, Reno and Sparks specifically needs to create a dedicated fund that is only for fire, cannot be affected by the vagaries of the recession or the boom, and that, and that way we know we're all there at the same, with the same risk and the same responsibility, because what happened is, we have a dedicated fire fund, Reno and Sparks don't. So Reno and Sparks, when they're, when they're, when they were suffering as bad as we, as badly as we were, were able to cut from fire, and police, by the way, to bolster up their general services. We could never do that. So that would be, just, this is just one commissioner talking, we're not, we have not taken a vote, but those, those would be my issues, financial liability and full coming to the table with a dedicated fund, otherwise, not interested, just make an automatic agreement, which, if they don't want to do it, we can go back to the legislature and ask for it again. That, to me, is bottom line of how we handle emergent, life-threatening issues that we have every single day.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Thank you, Vice Chair Jung. Commissioner Harton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'll go just a slightly different direction, and I slightly disagree with Commissioner Jung in that if a, if a, a unit is out of port, even though there's a closest port, that unit could be away, and so it still, it still throws things off, and that's why I think that this system is so crucial, because it looks at where every unit is, and I, I think that that's the, that's the key for us, trying to understand on a map, literally, where the, where the units are and what they're doing, is it something that's critical? So I'm very supportive of this. But one thing I would remind us of is that, remember, we didn't have a true consolidation, we had a contract, and it was a non-renewal of contract. And so that's the, that's kind of the difference, it's, I recently had to change my insurance for that reason, it was a non-renewal of a contract, not on their part, on my part, because I didn't like what they were charging me. Same scenario, it's very, very similar scenario. But Chief, my question is this, closest unit, but will they dispatch multiple units if needed? If there's, if there's, I'll refer to it as something catastrophic, that requires, you know, more resources. Will dispatch understand that, and, or, or does that still have to work agency to agency, where, you know, you've got a battalion chief on scene, and then they determine that more units are required?
It's the first, Commissioner, if you do AVL, you have a series of emergency incidents that are, that are on basically what are called run cards. So you have a P3, P2, P1 medical emergency, you have a car accident. Is it a single vehicle incident? Is it a car crash where people are trapped? Is it several car crashes that, where several vehicles have crashed and people are trapped? Is it a hazmat call? Is it a structure fire? Is it a brush fire? Is it all these things that we respond to? So you decide, the agencies decide in this particular call for a structure fire, you send three engines and a ladder truck, or you send four engines, or based on the size of the structure. And so those decisions are made ahead of time, and so the four or five pieces of equipment that might need to be sent to a call will be dispatched based on their proximity to the call, not because they're tied to a particular jurisdiction. But the agencies have to agree, even in an AVL, the agencies have to agree, that we're all going to send resources according to this new protocol.
My concern still is, Chief, is, and I recounted this story last time in our last meeting, and that was that there was a minor fender bender on 395, and HP was there, REMZA was there, there was already a fire truck there, and another fire truck drove by. And I've actually witnessed this in another place a few years back, where there was a minor fender bender in an intersection near the airport, and a ladder truck drove by, and there was already an engine on scene. And so my fear is, is that, is that, I don't want, I don't want a whole bunch of resource dispatched from different agencies.
Right.
When the, when the need isn't there, and I, and I don't know how to determine need, I'm not a firefighter, unlike Commissioner Jung, I don't even play one on TV, or a lawyer.
It all starts with the interrogation of the 911 caller.
Right.
So you get that information, that's your best information that you use to send.
But, so let me ask you a question, so if a police officer is on scene and they realize that they need more assistance, they, is, will that work through the same system? Do they have to go through the 911 system, or how does that work? In other words, let's just say there is someone, or multiple people trapped in an automobile, and it's a, you know, it's a life-threatening scenario where they need to get them out as quickly as possible?
Yes, a caller of the dispatcher, the deputy would say that there's people trapped, that triggers a whole level, new level of response.
Okay. I'm very supportive of this. I mean, I, this is a no-brainer for me, I don't, again, as Commissioner Jung feels, one commissioner speaking, I don't look at jurisdictional boundaries, I look at people that need help, period, and I don't care whether they're Reno, Sparks, Washoe County, or from Minnesota. It doesn't make any difference to me. So I'm fully supportive of this, Chief, and I think the faster that we can institute this, and help our regional partners to institute it, I'm supportive of that as well. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Commissioner Harton. Manager Slaughter.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I wanted to give a brief update on where we are with the dispatch studies that have been requested. Before I do that, I want to make sure that I clarify and put on the record that I don't believe there's any intent in any of this discussion to, to, to point fingers, particularly at individual dispatch staff, supervising staff, they, I've sat up at the dispatch center, the Washoe County Dispatch Staff are the most robust in the region, all the types of incidents that they dispatch for, fire, law enforcement, emergency medical, nine different agencies that they dispatch for. Going back to the 2012 study on dispatch that Chief mentioned, all the way through, the discussion is on the system, not on the individual dispatcher, so I just wanted to place that on the record. Regarding the... Regarding the dispatch study, the consolidation study that Chief mentioned from a year ago, that was conducted jointly by the City of Reno and Washoe County, that study, as you recall, came back on consolidation options, three different options, with as much of savings This board, not getting traction, as it was stated earlier, on that study, asked us to do an add-on to that, which is, what would it cost to stand up a Washoe County-only dispatch system? We are working through that with our consultant. There's some modeling that has to be done that we didn't anticipate. But we anticipate getting that study back to you very soon. I think discussion that Chief and I had was perhaps we even go thinking a little more out of the box and talking about truly regional dispatch. There are other agencies within Northern Nevada that perhaps might be interested in that discussion. And so I think perhaps Chief and I will have that in mind as we move forward on these discussions, that may not only include jurisdictions within Washoe County, maybe perhaps we look at other areas as well that could be interested in joining in with us.
Thank you, Manager Slaughter. And you know, just to comment on that, and then I will go to Commissioner Lucy. I think that type of a regional, bigger picture, which Commissioner Hartung has been harping at us on since he was elected five years ago, is that we are a greater region as we are going to grow. Our greater region is going to grow. And that, the situation of bringing in Story County, or Carson City, or, you know, even maybe parts of Lyon County, Northern, the Fernley Fire Department, Northern Nevada Fire Department for Lyon County, that is going to save everybody money. And that's really what this is about. We're looking at ways to reduce the cost to our taxpayers and provide better service. So with that, I will go to Commissioner Lucy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think there was a perfect segue into one of my comments, is that, you know, when we talk about a regional effort, a number of challenges that we've had in District Two is that a number of the South Valleys are geographically constrained such that southern part of Washoe Valley, that is serviced by our two spire stations down there, have some challenges with the lake in the middle and roads and challenges there. And we often utilize the City of Carson City to service some of our EMS calls and different things of that need, and based upon the caliber of those calls. But also, when we talk about City of Reno and City of Sparks annexation, we don't have just a very simple boundary for the City of Reno. It's very, it fluctuates. I was aware of a call that transpired on Mount Rose Highway that was just within the City of Reno, but actually, one of our stations, because the Station 12 was out of district and wasn't able to respond, a Reno City Fire Station had to respond from, all the way from Moana Lane, out to Mount Rose Highway, when 36, which is right up on Eric Creek, could have been there within 10 minutes, or sooner. And it would just be, it would just be smart things. And we talk about innovation, we talk about progressive nature within our community, and being at the forefront of what we do, AVL is the forefront. AVL is taking us into that next generation of response that we need in this region. And if we do it, it paves the way for everybody else to come along with us and start seeing the benefit and the service that we're providing to our citizens. And that's really what it comes down to. As Commissioner Jung pointed out, the moral compass needs to be towards, spun back towards our residents, and making sure that they are getting the best service possible from us, and that is through AVL, constantly. Not allowing a jurisdictional map, or a regional map, or the inability to serve. We need to be able to give our employees, our dispatchers, the best possible chance of getting somebody there quickest, fastest. And we're not doing that, because the politicians and the elected officials want to muddy the waters with saying, this is ours, this is yours, this is, we're not going to play this game, we're not going to sign contracts. It's ridiculous that we keep having this conversation. And it's just about providing the service and being smart about it. And AVL provides us that ability to do it. And it's a technology advance, it is where we're going as a society. It should be just, this should not even be a discussion item, this should just be something we should have done already. So with that, I will turn back it over to you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucy. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Mr. Manager, if it seemed as if, at least this commissioner, and I would assume that I would be speaking for the rest, if it seemed that we were referring to dispatch and anyone in dispatch, that's not the, it's the system itself. And in fact, I know of no more compassionate people in the world. And I've listened to some of these dispatch calls where this person is perfectly calm, and I, it just amazes me how they're able to do that. And obviously, they're highly trained, and they've done it for thousands of hours. So that certainly wasn't the reference to talk about any dispatchers and, or any one's dispatch staff. They're all doing exactly what we've asked them to do. But an important point was brought up here. How are BLM or Forest Service, how are those resources dispatched, Chief? How does it, how is it that, an example, Sparks had a call this last fire season up on top of the hill that actually overlooked Spanish Springs. It was to the south of Spanish Springs. And I sadly don't recall the name of that particular fire, but it burned all the way out nearly to Wadsworth. And I know we were on the call, and I know BLM was on the call, and I'm assuming that the state was on the call as well. But how are those, how are those resources dispatched? And how would they be dispatched through this kind of a new system and this technology?
Well, through two ways. We can either go through our dispatcher to Minden, where the federal resources are dispatched out of the Sierra Front inter-agency headquarters, or we can go direct to that dispatch center in Minden and make the request known of ourselves. But we typically go through our dispatch agency. So that typically is not a slow process. I think 98% of what we're talking about here are calls along the border. So if Sparks has a fire in their downtown, or Reno has a fire in downtown Reno, you know, we're not going to be closest to that. We're going to be closest to where our stations are relative to other persons' jurisdictions. And that's really where the system is failing. I want to also add that, again, dispatchers do a phenomenal job. When we have lightning busts, they usually go in and help them triage calls, and they're fantastic people. So I want to also state that this is not any criticism of our individual dispatchers. They're great people. It's just really the system of how calls get out and come in is what we need to fix.
And this is somewhat of a sad commentary, only because I would tell you, in fact, I know for a fact, cab companies have been using this technology for years, for years. This is nothing that's new for a cab company. They know which units, when a call comes in, they know which unit is closest to that particular call. So I mean, I think we're, I think we're well overdue. And even my smartphone can tell somebody where I am. You know, all I have to do is turn on the location. So I think that, I think this is long overdue, and I'm, again, fully supportive. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, if I may, there's actually one more component we need to fix, and that's when we have a report of a car crash, that goes from our 911 call taker, usually to NHP. If it's not known if injuries exist, we're usually not dispatched to that. So it may be dispatched as a fender bender. But it happened the other day. NHP got on the scene and found that there were injuries. And so they then report back to REMZA, then REMZA has to call us out. I mean, that's crazy to go in that many different steps.
That needs to be fixed. Yeah. Thank you. Commissioner Herman.
I just wanted to say thank you for getting us this far. It's quite a lot of progress. I thought that was really quite the opportunity. I know you've got more steadion to do, and more homework to do, and more meetings before we really get moving forward, but seems like we're on the right track. And I just want to keep listening to all the facts before I make any decisions. But I approve of what you've been doing and how you, where you've gotten. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I've not heard any opposition from any of the partners to not at least sit down and meet and talk about the issues here. I think we're all in agreement as agencies that we need to do something different.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman, and Chief. And Vice Chair Jung.
Just one other thing about automatic vehicle locators. Uber, you can watch your car coming to pick you up, or Uber Eats, when they're dropping it off, you can watch it on your screen. So there's no way this is expensive technology. It can't be, it cannot be. Because like Commissioner Hartung said, everybody knows where we're at because of GPS. So if the pushback is, we can't afford it, then can we talk to Uber or the taxi companies and see how they afforded it? Because Uber, I mean, literally lives on a knife stroke of making profit and not making profit. So I know everything they do is very cheap. So if they have automatic vehicle locators in people's cars that were not even made for that, I don't get, I mean, do we have to buy it from a National Firefighters Association sponsored? I mean, this is, to me, I think we could get a 17-year-old in here that took a STEM class or coding, and we'd have all of our stuff automatic vehicle located for, what, $100? And they're royalties? I mean, I don't get the, what's the hesitation with AVL? And don't tell me it's expensive.
Commissioner Jung, the technology exists. The problem really is that Reno, Sparks, and TM, the dispatchers really can't push information back and forth to each other in an easy way. It's something called cloning a call, which takes a lot of steps. Mutually aid requests or manual requests, that's taking a long time. So what I gleaned from my field trip to the City of Las Vegas is that all the agencies pay into a system where they all fund the dispatchers, and those dispatchers dispatch for all the agencies. So it's just, it's just one group of dispatchers that are doing this. That really is where the solution lies.
It is a solution. It's also a personnel solution, because we have right now people sitting in dispatch, which I think is like human torture, where they're doing the same job, but they're being paid different pay rages based on which agency they are representing, although they're doing the exact same job. And I think that would have to be a management nightmare. Why do they get to do this, but I don't get to do that? You know, they do exactly what I'm doing, but I'm making this much more an hour, and they're making this less an hour. I think that would also, if we could make it one regional dispatch center, to create the equity within that very stressful environment, would do a lot to our sick days, our health issues, et cetera, and just basic management of people. They're doing the same job, but they get paid two different rates based on which agencies they're from, which is so unfair. And from organizational effectiveness and organizational psychology, that's like, that's torture, what we're doing to people. That is so, to me, unethical and unmanageable. So let's move forward and take those arguments, too, about dispatch when you're meeting with these chiefs. That's not fair to the dispatchers. And you can say, well, nobody's making them do that job, but maybe they want to be within the Sheriff's Department doing that job because they have the longevity in that job. So that's another nut we have to crack. That's just gross to me, that we're doing that to people. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Jung. I don't see any other commissioners with comments, so I'm going to ask a couple of questions, if that's okay, Chief. I know, I don't think there's any question that AVL is the answer, and the answer to the dispatch problem. And there's also no question we have a dispatch problem. When you have circumstances where nobody gets called out, you have circumstances where there's an accident directly in front of a Reno Fire Station, a Sparks Fire Station, or a TM Fire Station, and somebody else gets called out because it's in somebody else's, technically, in somebody else's jurisdiction, that's just silly. We are wasting time and hurting our citizens. So I think AVL is really the answer. But I want to ask a couple of questions about what exactly is regional fire? You did this trip to Las Vegas. Would you consider the greater Clark County area regional fire?
I would, because in the way that they cooperate with each other, they have boundary drops. And so Las Vegas can be in Clark County, Clark County can be in Las Vegas, North Las Vegas can be in Clark County. In fact, Chief Gorgon, who we just hired, said North Las Vegas handles the most calls for Clark County than, in their proximity, than Clark County does. And it's not a big deal for any one of those agencies to do that.
As I recall from the legislature, when the automatic aid legislation was going on, which was in, what, 2015? As I recall from that, there were, there was testimony provided from some of the firefighters, and I don't know if it was a chief, or if it was who it was, but down in Clark County, who essentially said that it's not uncommon for them to be in somebody else's jurisdiction every day, that they're in someone else's jurisdiction daily, and that that works and is beneficial, and it's basically regional fire. And it's regional fire done with AVL and a regional dispatch. It's not regional fire where one agency is completely in control of the region, of the greater region. And so I think, I think it's important for us to realize that we now have regional fire with Sparks, and we really have to come up with a way to resolve that problem with Reno. And I hope that we're able to do that, and I'm glad to know that you're going to be meeting with them all later this afternoon. One of the areas that gives me grave concern is Verdi. And, you know, Commissioner Herman and I talk about Verdi from the dais all the time. One of the things that worries me is if Reno annexed everything within its sphere of influence, everything in Verdi within its sphere of influence, there's still patches in the middle of their sphere of influence that are, they can't annex because they belong to the county. That's just simply illogical to me. And that concerns me a great deal, that we have that circumstance going on. So I really, I really hope that as we move forward, we talk about regional dispatch and not talk about the only way we're going to, the only way we can have regional fire is if we're all one entity. Because from this commissioner's perspective, and I'll just say this for the record, from this commissioner's perspective, that's not going to happen under my watch, not as long as I have a vote. I mean, now, the other commissioners may vote me down, that's okay. But I'm not going to agree to that, because that would cost our unincorporated taxpayers a great deal of money to do that. And so, and I know that you and I have had this conversation, so I know that we're on the same page where that comes. But it is not my intention to drive the cost up to our constituents. It is my intention to find ways, as I said before, to lower the overhead to our constituents and provide better service. And I know that that's what you're working on, and I know that that's what Manager Slaughter has been working on, because I've had conversations with you guys about that, as I'm sure the other commissioners have. So I appreciate the concerns that you have, and I also appreciate your position on regionalization, and I hope that we'll continue to be able to work in that direction. So Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Harman, Commissioner Harman. That's a combination of the two.
Is that like Dweave?
Yeah, Dweave. That's like Dweave.
Chief, so dispatch will be able to see where all the vehicles are located, correct?
Yes.
Will other units be able to see where the next closest unit is as well?
Yeah, we can do that today. I can take you to my chief's car, turn on my MDT, and show you the position of every single fire truck in this region.
Perfect. Sorry? And law enforcement?
And law enforcement can do that as well. And REMZA can see the position of their ambulances.
Okay. Will we be able to see where law enforcement is? Do they have AVL now?
I believe that there's a separation between law and fire to where we, I don't know the answer to that question. I suspect it's no, but it's probably possible.
It's probably wise, given the environment that we've seen recently, and the change in the number of active shooter events, where many times, a fire service could be some of the first on the scene, but may not be able to get in and, you know, clear the scene, or get into the scene because it's not been cleared. And so I'm just, I'm wondering how all of that would work backwards, and would dispatch be able to see, if nothing less, where law enforcement less, where law enforcement and fire services, first responders in general, as well as ambulances?
I'm sure dispatch can see both.
Okay.
I'm not able to see the position of law enforcement.
Understood. Okay. Thank you.
And may I add, may I end with one final comment, Madam Chair?
Absolutely.
So what we've done with Sparks is we're responding for Sparks and to their jurisdiction, and they don't send another fire truck when it's, when it's a low-acuity call. They do the same for us. Sparks will respond into TM, and we won't even know it. They'll handle the report. But let's just say, okay, another agency thinks that they still need to respond into their jurisdiction. Then how would the public be harmed if the closest unit is sent with a fire truck that has at least one paramedic, and sometimes two, and sometimes three, to a critical medical call, and still the agency who has jurisdiction is still responding? I mean, you want to do that, fine. But why would we prohibit a paramedic fire engine from responding to a, to a critical medical call when they're just a few hundred feet away, simply because they're not in the right jurisdiction? That's, that's just not serving the public.
Thank you, Chief. That is such a great point, and I'm so glad you brought it forward. With that, I don't see any other commissioner comments, so we'll open this to public comment. And I have Ms. Norma Havens, and then Ms. Elise Weatherly.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to address the forum here. To introduce myself, I'm with USA Fleet Solutions. We're a locally operated AVL GPS telematics company, nationally known and nationally recognized. And so we bring a lot to the table. One of the things we just wanted to say is, we can bring some of the latest technology, which is second-by-second tracking, which is, Ms. Young had talked about Uber. I could show you all the vehicles of our agencies on this. Currently, right now, we have second-by-second technology, but we can also go beyond that and also give them engine diagnostics. So we can actually read the Cummins codes on the Cummins engines and all of those other types of things. We also have executive dashboards, so that from an executive point of view, they can see things, from an executive point of view, of what's critically going on out there. We have a very robust mobile app that they can use on their cell phones and tablets. And we also have an open API for integration that is very, very easy to work with. Our technology has 90 engineers behind it. And just some of the people that are currently using it from a national point of view is Homeland Security and Department of Defense and UPS. So we have a technology here available, I think, that is pretty robust. Currently, right now, and locally, not all of the departments, but Washoe County, City of Sparks, City of Reno, State of Nevada, and Carson City are already on us, including Douglas County, too. So we already do a lot of the departments within here, within the jurisdictions that you're talking about right now. So I just wanted to just put our name out there and let you know that we, we believe that we could be possibly a partner, and a local partner to help in this process, and any other departments that may need to consider AVL. You made a perfect point for selling the point of GPS. I'll send you my, my case for technology and for GPS, because I think you would like to see some of the things that we can do in it, not just within the fire, but within all of the departments. There are some departments within the agencies that are not on. So if you've got any questions, or if you've got any information that you'd like, I'll get you my information.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Elise Weatherly.
Elise Weatherly, Washoe County resident. And Chief Moore, I just want to say thank you for the time that you put into that. What I can summarize this is that a dispatcher has to get appropriate, accurate, and truthful information before they can see who to send where, right? And I was, I had called the police a couple times, and it seems like the first thing they wanted to know was information about me. I wanted to tell them what was going on, and they triggered it on me, and I'm thinking, well, that's kind of a waste of time. But maybe they needed to know if I could be trusted or not, right? And Ms. Jung was saying that this didn't have anything to do with morality. But what I think it does is has to do with morality, because what is a good business and what does it consist of? It's who you can trust. I was involved in mergers, too, you know? I had employees that I could trust. We got the job done because we were trustworthy. And you can have all the technology in the universe, but unless it's handled properly by the appropriate employees, it's not going to work. If you've got dispatchers there, they might be really good people, but what if they don't do a good job? Just to let you know, I failed as a waitress. I succeeded as a director. I was not a good job fit for a waitress. That doesn't mean that I was a good or a bad person. It just means it wasn't a good fit for me. So you've got some people that are really good at dispatching, and you've got some people that are really terrible at dispatching. And this is where the supernatural spiritual aspect comes in. You've got to have discernment when you're hiring people, if they're fit for that job or not, right? Does that make sense? Plus, you need to be able to reward your good employees and discipline and fire your bad ones. You've got to have the option of doing that, but that starts at the top. You've got to have somebody at the top that knows everybody else that's down there and work on that. One of the things that was out there is quality, public service, effective communication, and integrity. And those things all factor together. If you've got some employees that have good integrity, they're going to have effective communication. You've got to know whether somebody is telling you the truth or not. You've got to know whether there's a big accident. You don't want to send, like you say, 14 people to a fender bender. That doesn't make any sense, right? You send the most people to the biggest problem. You've got to have somebody at the very bottom, supposedly the bottom, that's telling you the truth. And if they tell the truth, it doesn't matter what the tone of voice is, if I say, "Fire, there's a fire," does that mean I'm condemning you? Or if I scream, "Fire, fire," are you going to believe me? It comes down to the individuals. I wanted to tell Ms. Jung too, as far as the homeless, as the nonprofit organizations go, some of the nonprofit organizations are trustworthy, some are not. Some of them have wolves in them, some of them have good employees. They're businesses with individuals, some of those individuals are good, and some of them aren't. If you can filter out the bad ones, you've got a good business. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly. Seeing that, I see no more public comment. I know there was another name on the list, but it's now missing. So I will close public comment and bring it back to the board. And...
Madam Chair, if I may.
Commissioner Lucy.
Thank you, ma'am.
At this time, I would make a motion that we accept the report from Chief and move forward with AVL and direct staff to implement the AVL dispatching.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Mr. Manager, did you have something to add? Okay, we've done public comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are we voting on the board? Okay. Please cast your vote as soon as it's up on your screen. And affirm your vote on the screen. Motion carries four to nothing, and that is, also for the record, we want to note that Commissioner Jung has stepped away for a short period of time, and she hopefully will return later. And then therefore, the motion passes. Thank you, Chief. And I think we are on to...
Madam Chair, on the Truckee Meadows Agenda, there is an item five, which is the chief's report. I think we can, Chief, can we remove that item?
Okay.
I'm sorry, it's announcements, chief's announcements.
Chief announcements.
So that item five on the Truckee Meadows Fire Agenda is removed.
So we're removing that? Okay. And so then we, our final agenda is public comment. Final agenda item is public comment. I have nothing on my list. Madam Clerk, do you have any additional public comments for the Fire Board?
We don't have them input into the system for the Fire Board. If you were calling, I think it's agendized on the County Commission Agenda also, but it happens to be Agenda Item Number Seven, and we do have some folks signed in there.
Okay. Do they want to, so, I'll just call them, and if you, if you want to speak now, or you want to wait till...
I'll let the attorney speak.
Mr. Watts, fail.
So item six on the Truckee Meadows Agenda is public comment. Item seven on the BCC Agenda lists public comment as to the Washoe County Library Board and Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District. So the Library Board already had a public comment, so to that extent, and they've already adjourned. But you can go ahead and open up the Truckee Meadows public comment and BCC public comment at the same time.
Okay. I will open Truckee Meadows public comment. And I have Ms. Elise Weatherly. Next is Ms. Tammy Holdstill, and then Ms. Zany Marsh.
Elise Weatherly, Washoe County resident. Thanks again to you guys for letting me do this. I just wanted to, I had wanted to tell Mr. Scott thank you while he was here, but he left. I had always questioned the validity and necessity of public libraries with all the technology that's going on right now, right? I see these young people not only getting entertainment, but education from their devices. So I'm thinking, well, what good is a library? Nobody wants books anymore. And after listening to him speak, I thought, well, he is truly preparing the kids for the future, and I want to say thank you for that. I want to say thank you to him for putting effort into the STEAM projects, into the robotics club, to keep kids at the appropriate reading level. Because what I protest, what I object to, if anyone cares, what I object to, is the No Child Left Behind system. Because what that does is that gives leeway to the kids that don't really want to be in school and don't really care, takes your brilliant kids and goes, well, you know, we'll put you to the back while we focus in on the people that don't really care. If the library system really can get these kids to read at the appropriate level, what a difference that's going to make in the future of our kids, right? The only other thing is that the downtown Reno Library seems like a kind of a homeless shelter to me. I've been there many, many times, and it smells, okay? Because it's a good place for people that don't have a home to hang out. So I don't really think that revamping that is super good, but that's not up to me, it's up to somebody else. I also wanted to say the charge, that they were going to make a charge for the meeting rooms, right? And they had it at $20 for the recession and all that. I'm going to go back to the nonprofits. Make them pay, all right? Don't give them a leeway just because they're a nonprofit organization. If they're a nonprofit organization, sometimes they do good for the community, sometimes they're taking that money and pocketing it into their own pockets. So I would say it's a matter, too, of who you're going to trust, right? We have to take a look at, where's the money going? Who's in charge of the money? Who's accounting for it? Who's doing an audit of it? Who's checking it out to see if it's being put in the right places for the right reasons? I cannot tell you how many times I have been ripped off and robbed by simply believing somebody because I like their face, or their demeanor, or whatever. And there's so much corruption going on out there that unless somebody pays attention to it, the money's going to go, you know, like the government thing, $150 for a nail, right? Something like that. So please, you guys, take a, take a close look at who's getting what. Are the pay grades reasonable? Are they good for the service of the community? Are they doing their job? And should we keep them on? Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Tammy Holdstill.
I have a overhead, please. Tammy Holdstill, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee. The water's still there. I'm still here. I am here today about what you see right there, and the propaganda that was put out there at FACE the State regarding the Lemon Valley and the amount of money being spent. You talk about $1.5 million spent this year. Well, four, over $4,000 was sent, spent on your sewer plant that is in violation of NAC. And as of right now, I have Senator Gansner looking at the situation and working with LCB, and she's also looped in the other Assembly and Senators in Carson City on it. Because the propaganda needs to stop. The truth needs to come out. And the truth is being stretched, and it's not helping residents. It's helping yourselves. The amount of money and the amount of time that was put into that sewer plant that is dilapidated is going to be overwhelmed here soon with more development. And it is in a 100-year floodplain that you're trying to survive. It needs to stop. The propaganda needs to stop. I'm taking the information that I've received, and I'm sending it back out to FACE the State so they can see the actual information. Also, one of the other issues is that Washoe County is on the hook. One of the things that I have been doing my research on is Tomo, which is, until 2017, officially under Washoe County. Do you realize that Tomo was telling everybody they weren't doing it until I finally pushed the facts? That over 108 million gallons in 2016 was pumped into an aquifer that stopped the water from being absorbed into the ground. It's not only evaporation, it is saturation that made that lake the way it was. So there's issues out there that Washoe County is on the hook for and needs to start dealing with publicly, transparently, and for the record, the right moral way.
Ms. Zany Marsh.
Good morning. I'm Zany Marsh. I'm the Executive Director of the American Red Cross of Northern Nevada. And I just wanted to share with you that the American Red Cross is concerned about the safety of all of our residents and our pets who risk being displaced, injured, or who risk losing their lives as a result of home fires in our community. And as a result, the, the Red Cross volunteers are installing free smoke alarms in the homes of our most fire-affected communities. And we are, not only do we welcome working with Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, but also all of our local fire agencies in raising awareness that these free smoke alarm installations exist, that calling the American Red Cross of Northern Nevada would be a wonderful way of requesting smoke alarms be installed in their homes. And then also, that we will be making a concentrated push to install up to 600 smoke alarms on the dates of April 28, on May 1, and May 5. We will be doing that in communities around, around Reno and Carson City. And, but we will really be concentrating on our fire-affected communities. And this is really in an effort to save lives and prevent injuries. Because, as we all know, those can really be quite devastating. So I would just encourage that anyone who's interested in receiving a free smoke alarm, please dial 775-954-1185. That's the American Red Cross Smoke Alarm Hotline. And we will have Red Cross volunteers who monitor that line, and then we'll be in touch with residents who are interested in those installations. Now, data suggests that up to one-half of our, of individuals who are experiencing a home fire are saved as a result of a functional smoke alarm in their homes. And so this is the fastest, most effective way that the Red Cross knows to work with our first responders and fire to save lives and to give people the, the most efficient and effective way possible to evacuate their home. And, and so we really encourage, we really encourage our residents to take advantage of this wonderful program, free smoke alarm installation. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. I see no more public comments, so we'll bring it back to the board. And let me find the red agenda here.
Madam Chair, I believe you can adjourn as the Fire Board at this point.
That's what, we are next on the agenda. So I will say the Fire Board is in adjournment, and the County Commission, the BCC, will continue on with the rest of our agenda. Okay, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Sorry, that was a little, sometimes the public process is a little, little messy, but we got through those three meetings, so...
Yes.
We continue on as the County Commission meeting, which is item, our next item's item eight, which is Commissioners, County Managers' Announcements, Reports, and Updates, Requests for Information, or Topics for Future Agendas.
Okay. I don't see any commissioners signed in. Does anybody have anything? Okay. Mr. Manager, do you have something?
I have one item I wanted to mention, that is... I have one item I wanted to mention, and that is an update regarding the, what's commonly known as the Washoe County Lands Bill, the Washoe County Economic Growth and Conservation Act, which has been discussed by this Board, as well as by the Cities of Reno and Sparks over the past two years. More recently, staff has held and attended numerous meetings with individuals, as well as interest groups regarding the bill. Washoe County staff is currently working with various stakeholders to understand the perspective of many groups and individuals in relation to wilderness study areas in northern Washoe County. So that Washoe County and this Board can propose to the region and to our lawmakers a potential wilderness portion of the act. I just wanted to let everyone know that Jamie Rodriguez is our staff member assigned to this project. Her information, contact information is available on our Washoe County website, and she has and is available to discuss any questions or concerns. Our next public meeting, which will be sponsored by Washoe County, date has not been identified, but it will occur in the spring and will be well noticed. So if there's any questions or comments or concerns, Jamie Rodriguez is our contact that.
Thank you.
Can be connected with.
All right. So I see no other comments, so we will close Item 8 and move on to the Consent Agenda. Mr. Manager.
Our Consent Agenda today is represented as Item 9 on today's agenda. Those are Items 9A through 9J5 on your agenda today.
Do you want to pull any of them, Mr. Manager? Commissioners, anybody have a comment or want to pull anything? I see we have some comments, we have some public comments, so we'll go to public comment. Ms. Jennifer Mannix, and then Mr. Rod Dimmitt. And would you let us know which item you're speaking on, please? Thank you.
For the record, I'm Jennifer Mannix, the Director of Marketing for Art Town. I'm speaking on behalf of 9G2, the Chinese Lantern Festival. I just want to show my support for this on behalf of our organization. Art Town is built on collaboration, and this is the epitome of a wonderful collaboration. The May Arboretum Society has done an outstanding job on pushing this festival forward. And if you haven't seen it, you will be mesmerized by the quality and the caliber of this. And I think it will be one of Art Town's signature events, so please, I encourage you to support that item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rod Dimmitt.
Good morning. I'm Rod Dimmitt, and I'm a volunteer at the Arboretum. And I wanted to take a moment to thank you in advance for supporting the Chinese Lantern Festival event. This event is going to be a game changer for our area, and it's going to bring in approximately 80,000 visitors. You may be asking yourself, how does our community benefit by hosting a Chinese Lantern Festival event? Well, it's going to increase the diversity of tourism. It's also going to increase the local hotel room occupancy rates. It's going to support Robert de May's vision of increasing the, young families and children into the Botanical Garden. It's also going to offer new potential for increased donations to the Arboretum. And finally, it's going to increase local awareness of the gem that we have, which is the May Arboretum and Botanical Garden. So I want to thank each and every one of you for considering this event. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment, I'll bring it back to the board. Looking for a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we are now on to Item 10, Mr. Manager. Oh, motion, please affirm your vote on the board, noting that Commissioner Jung is absent, so please remove her as a voting. I don't know how that exactly happened, but.
Yeah, because it's always.
Yeah, we don't normally use the tablet for consent, so maybe that's why.
Yeah.
So, okay.
So just to confirm, that vote was a 4-0 vote with Commissioner Jung absent.
Correct. I was just going to confirm that, and thank you very much. All right.
Madam Chair, if I could go back to announcements, which was Item, I believe Item 8. I forgot to mention Item 13 on today's agenda will need to be removed. That is a maintenance agreement for elevators. We will bring that back to you at a future meeting.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I just got a very bad message. Would you please repeat that? I'm sorry.
I'm happy to do that. Item 13 needs to be removed from today's agenda. That is a maintenance agreement for elevators, and we will bring that back to you to a future meeting.
Okay, good. Thank you. So we will remove Item 13, and we will then move on to Item 10.
Item 10.
Item 10 is Recommendation to Approve a Resolution of the Washoe County Commission Creating the Community Homeless Advisory Board, otherwise known as the CHAB.
Let's take a recess.
Can we just take a moment recess?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Brick Bigler may need to leave.
I need to make a phone call. If we could just take about a 10-minute recess, please.
Can you put us in recess?
Thank you. We will call us back to order again, and sorry for that recess, and thank you all very much for allowing me a few minutes to kind of get my head back on. And we, I believe, are on Item 10.
Item 10 is Recommendation to Approve a Resolution of the Washoe County Commission Creating the Community Homeless Advisory Board, otherwise known as the CHAB. And Assistant County Manager Kate Thomas is here if you'd like to ask questions or any kind of presentation on this item.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Harton.
Can we just appoint Commissioner Jung?
That would be the next item.
That's the next item.
Not this item, you're off topic.
Put the two together.
Just as a way of sort of introduction, the Transitional Governing Board is a body, a board that has been in existence for many years. This new Community Homeless Advisory Board will take the place of that. The Transitional Governing Board has been in discussion for quite a while about their role, their role in the community. The original role was simply to monitor and oversee the agreement and the, I'm sorry, the contract for the downtown homeless shelter. That was their real, their purpose. They've looked to broadening their scope and would be a board that this body, as well as City of Reno's Council, City of Sparks Council, could direct issues related to homelessness for them to review and make recommendations back to receptive, each of the individual boards and councils.
And so is this board replacing that?
It is. This will replace that board.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah. Commissioners, any questions? Do you want a presentation from our lovely Ms. Kate Thomas? No?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any, I don't see any public comment on this item, so we will go ahead and vote. Please cast your vote, and then please affirm your vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the motion, please affirm your vote on the screen. The motion passes 4 to nothing with Commissioner Jung absent. And Mr. Manager, now we're moving on to Item 11.
Next item is Item 11, Discussion of Possible Action to Point Two Voting and One Alternate Voting Member of the Washoe County Commission to the Community Homelessness Advisory Board for a term to be determined at the discretion of the County Commission. And again, as background, the Transitional Governing Board, in discussing the new bylaws for the Community Homeless Advisory Board, discussed expanding representation from each of the local governments. And the final discussion was that there would be two from each, two from City of Reno, two from City of Sparks, and two from Washoe County. And with each allowing an alternate voting member in case one of those two couldn't attend. And so that's what this item is about.
So Commissioner Lucy, I understand you're the alternate.
Correct.
On this right now, would you like to stay as alternate, or you want to move up?
Madam Chair, what I would ask is that I would move up to a voting position. Commissioner Jung and I would be the two voting members of this board, and then we would look for one of the other Commissioners to be the alternate voting member.
Okay, I would be happy to take the alternate position unless one of the other Commissioners wants to. Oops. Was that a train whistle I just heard? All right, so we have a motion and a second. We do have public comment. Oh, no, that's Commissioner Lucy.
Yeah, that was me. Just wanted to say that.
So that's done.
It did, was there discussion? I don't believe there was a discussion of term of that, those appointments.
There was no discussion of term. Do we need to set a term?
So let's, my recommendation that we would set the term for two years, on a two-year term for these, this Board specifically.
All right. Mr. Wattsfield.
Madam Chair, just for the record, the resolution you just passed says that the members shall serve without compensation and serve at the pleasure of the agency that appointed them. So it's up to you to decide whether to have a term, and then if you're going to have a term, you could pick the length of that. And it would still be subject to serving at the pleasure of the Board.
Okay.
So.
Motioner agreed.
Yeah, I mean, if it's okay with the Board, I think that we remain with a two-year term and set that, and then at the discretion of the Board, if any members seem to be, need to be replaced, that discussion, we do have that discussion every six months here at the Commission, so we can, we can address that at any time. So I would remain with the second, my second amended.
Okay, so we, I believe Commissioner Herman was the seconder, and she has agreed to that two-year term. So we all, we do not have any public comment, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Please cast your vote on the screen, and then affirm your vote when it goes up. The motion passes 4 to nothing, again with Commissioner Herman absent. Please note for the record.
I mean Commissioner Jung.
Thank you very much.
I mean Commissioner Jung.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Jung. Sorry, guys. Commissioner Herman is here. Commissioner Jung is absent. Thanks. Okay, Mr. Manager, we're on to 12.
Item 12 is Recommendation to Acknowledge receipt of fiscal year 1718 second quarter status update for Washoe County Regional Detention Facility. Includes security of the jail, conditions of confinement, and medical care of inmates housed at the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. And Chief Deputy Tom Green is here to present this item.
Hello, Deputy, how are you?
I'm good.
Chief Deputy.
I'm good, ma'am, and I'm going to try not to touch the button today. Last time I had a button pushing issue, so I'm going to avoid touching the button. Basically, this, I'm going to need the clicker there, okay. This will be the second report in the quarterly reporting for the Washoe County Jail. Generally, these quarterly reports will focus on the conditions of confinement at the jail, as delineated in the Nevada revised statute. The report may also contain relevant information from the Sheriff to the Board on emerging topics or trends. That first quarter report that I presented in October of 2017 was really a broad overview of some of the historical issues at the jail and the physical plant, as well as security measures that had been undertaken over the years. The first report also contains statistical data relative to inmate populations, types of inmates held, and budgetary issues facing both the county and the Sheriff's Office. This second quarterly report will focus on some of the same statistical data and some recommendations of the National Sheriff's Association following a review of their draft report, which we do not have a final copy yet. Okay, great. So as the Board may be aware, the Sheriff asked the National Sheriff's Association to conduct an audit, an oversight of the operation at the Sheriff's Office. That audit included an onsite review and some recommendations specific to the physical plant, the processes in which we use to move inmates and house inmates, staffing needs for the facility, medical care provided to the inmate population, and also included our practices dealing with the mentally ill inmates and those suffering from substance Just for another historical, I don't want to go too far back in time, but that original design of the facility in 1987 was truly designed to house a lower-risk inmate than we have today. That original physical plant consisted of seven identical detached housing units, each designed to house 72 inmates with 56 cells in each unit. Some of those cells were obviously double-bunked. Those housing units were initially built with porcelain, toilet and sink, a wooden desk, a wooden bunk, and a wooden door. Clearly, the inmate population has changed, and that physical plant is not sufficient for the inmates that we're housing today. The NSA draft report also suggests that all of these units be hardened to include the removal of the sink and toilet in favor of a detention-grade steel toilet and sink. That original design of the facility with the wooden bunks allowed a gap between the back of the bunk and the wall. That point has been identified as a ligature risk. We've had inmates both attempt and complete suicide on that, on that very bunk. So part of that was a recommendation that those be, that those be fixed. Because we no longer house those lower-risk inmate population, again, the design of the units presents challenges for both maintenance and security. Over the years, we've taken measures to harden those units and provide housing for the mentally ill and disruptive and violent inmates. These measures are expensive, they require displacement of the units while the work is conducted, and they traditionally require more staff. While that NSA report did not identify any urgent security matters that would put the public at risk, there's nonetheless recommendations that should be considered as capital improvement projects as we, that are prioritized through the county. The welfare of the inmates in a custodial situation is best measured by several factors, to include the health of the inmates, their access to medical care, infectious disease and vermin control, food services, environmental controls, the safety of the inmates, and out-of-cell time. Each of these important components can measure the overall welfare of the inmate population. The draft report identified restrictive housing, sometimes referred to as segregation or special housing. A long time ago, it was referred to as isolation or solitary, as an emerging national matter. Our facility, since at least 2002, has operated under a standard, which is legal, however, standard is much different than the nationally recognized best practices. The genesis of this operation is truly found in the increase in inmate populations, limitations on the physical plant, and staffing availability. As an example, each wing of the special housing unit and housing unit four has 14 cells. If we allowed each inmate out one hour a day, that'd be a minimum of 14 hours, not counting lunches and breaks and everything else. That unit's only double-staffed from seven to seven, so for that 12-hour period, we have to try to get all that tear time done. Our stance from policy matter is that inmates should be afforded at least one hour out of their cell every single day. While inmates in general population are afforded much more than that each day, the inmates in restrictive housing are only offered an hour and 15 minutes every other day under our current policy. It's been that way since '02. Truly, the inmates most affected by this limited time are those that cannot function in general population setting, to include violent and assaults of inmates, gang members, disciplinary violators, and the severely mentally ill. I have instructed our inmate management unit to explore ways to move away from the restrictive housing tier-time model, with the goal that every inmate is afforded at least one hour out every day. Not only will Not only will this align with nationwide best practices, serves to improve the conditions of confinement for the inmates in those units. The draft report, as no surprise to anyone, also identified the mentally ill and substance abuse inmates as a national challenge for all jails. In the past five months, we've reorganized our mental health unit toward a model of engagement with the inmates and a more comprehensive strategy toward moving toward the inmates' health while they remain in jail. This is not a new idea. However, we have renewed our focus and are really focused on helping this vulnerable population with the, with the goal of reducing the recidivism. The scourge of opiate addiction is also an issue for our facility, similar to the national crisis facing other sheriffs in other communities. We've taken proactive measures to be a key partner in community-wide discussions regarding the response to this growing crisis. We know from the draft report and national trends that jails have truly become the de facto place for the mentally ill and the drug addicted. We're no different. The draft report suggests, and we are already well into establishing a treatment program to address opiate-addicted inmates. We stand ready to lead this discussion. However, community resources are needed to ensure wraparound care model exists in our region. Our team recently traveled to Massachusetts to learn from a leading sheriff the best practices to reduce recidivism in opiate-dependent inmates. With the community's assistance and support from the board, program within the jail could become a reality. In regard to the health of the inmate population during the second quarter, the contracted medical provider performed some five-hundred-and-twenty-six mental health evaluations during that same period. Some eighteen-hundred inmates received some sort of mental health medication. Twenty-one-hundred inmates during the second quarter were identified as suffering from a chronic medical issue, with in excess of thirty-six-hundred inmates having prescribed medications. As to the current status of the inmates in the jail and their medical care, I can report there are no, there are no trends, there's no outbreaks, there's no identifiable issues that, that I can think of that need to be brought before the board. I will say that the medical unit has focused on community ties, continuum of care issues, including a partnership with emergency rooms. We've created a new form so we can track refusals from the jail and ensure that they're getting the proper medical care, and that we have that documentation currently. Prior to that, we, we did not have that. When we refused somebody at the jail, Reno Police or Sparks Police, or whoever it was, took them to the hospital and brought them back, and there was no, we may get something back from the ER, but there was no documentation on our end regarding refusal. So, so that's an important piece. Then they're also partnering with, with Hopes and Lakes Crossing, again, in that community, community partnerships. Regarding medical billing, this was a question brought from the board during my last presentation. So the inmates in the detention center are billed for medical visits and medicines. The system is based on a co-pay, however, excludes chronic care issues, mental health issues, and pregnancy care. Insurance companies are not billed with the exception of hospital stays. During the last calendar year, we billed in excess of a hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars for visits and prescriptions. I would give you an example that our current Health Service Administrator just came from a hospital. For that hospital, they had two full-time employees for two-hundred patients doing insurance billing. Seventy percent of those patients were Medicare, Medicaid patients, not covered by private insurance. And as the board may know, those Medicare, Medicaid patients, their care discontinues while they're in custody. Staffing, staffing continues to be an issue. We're making headway in the October 2017 presentation. The commissioners requested information regarding needs, possible staffing solutions, as we did in, in the previous fiscal year. The sheriff's office is in the process of submitting budget requests for staff in the upcoming budget cycle. Truly, the NSA draft audit guided some of these current requests. These requests include both sworn and non-sworn staff to effectively operate the detention facility while reducing overtime. As noted in the last presentation, excessive overtime is not only a costly way to do business, is an effect on employee morale, productivity, and their health. Our current staffing model, we have two-hundred-and-ten deputy sheriffs to staff the detention facility. Right off the top, we take forty-eight of those deputies, and they, they fill services positions, which include things like the courts and court transportation and the inmate management unit. There's a variety. So those, those forty-eight are immediately unavailable to staff the line functions in detention. That number then drops to about a hundred-and-forty-seven to staff the available mandatory positions that we have within detention. Several staffing reports have confirmed the need that we actually need, and this is a typo in my report, we actually need a hundred-and-seventy-five deputies, and that's what our budget request reflects, and I apologize for that typographical error. Of note, that NSA report indicates that nearly seven full-time positions are required just to backfill for military leave. And that doesn't include, of course, sick leave, vacation, and all the other types of leave that the Washoe County employees take. For every manned post, that's twenty-four-seven post, which all those detention posts are, we need nearly six full-time deputies to, to manage one post for a twenty-four-hour period. And that accounts for, for, of course, leave and training and other matters where they're unavailable. This slide represents a snapshot of the Washoe County population versus the authorized deputy positions that, that we've had over the budget years. So as, you know, as we've talked about this before, I've listened to you talk about this, this is no surprise to anyone, but it's just a, kind of a graphic reflection of the, of the downturn in that economy. In the October 2017 report, the commissioners requested some metrics that would reflect the usage of the jail by agency. And I've provided those in this, in this report. During calendar year 2017, the jail accepted twenty-one-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-five prisoners. Forty-three percent of those represented arrests by the Reno Police Department. The Washoe County Sheriff's Office and Sparks PD together represented thirteen percent of those individually. Currently, the Reno Municipal Court accounts for nearly twelve percent of the total population. That is twelve percent of inmates that have no other charge aside from a misdemeanor arrest. This is a direct correlation to the Reno Police Department's level of bookings annually, and many of these bookings represent nuisance crimes occurring in the downtown, midtown areas. And we anticipate that any increase, which we know is coming, in patrol staff at either Reno or Sparks, is going to equate to more bookings. All those bookings have a downstream effect, to include housing and transportation costs to court. The bulk of the inmates transported annually to the Reno Justice Court, counting for nearly twelve-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-five individual inmates transported during fiscal year sixteen-seventeen, with fifty-six-hundred-and-nineteen of those being transported to the Reno Municipal Court alone. Arrests generated by the Reno Police Department, both felony and misdemeanor, represent nearly half of the total transports this office does. Based on our analysis, the cost to include staff salaries and vehicles means that every general population inmate, meaning they're not a special inmate that requires more than one deputy, to transport them to court costs about a hundred-and-seventy dollars. We currently staff court transportation with fifteen deputies and one sergeant. The board also asked me to, to report on the pre-trial risk assessment, bail reform. As the board knows, we're a pilot site. We continue to work with court services and the courts with this program. Following that last meeting, we spent significant staff time dedicated to the analysis of booking and the correlation to the new process as far as the amount of time that inmates spend in booking. A report provided in November of 2017 showed a slight increase in the average time spent in intake from ten-point-two hours to ten-point-eight-two hours after the implementation of the, of the bail reform and, and pre-trial risk. Although this represents a small increase in the time, the, in intake, the correlation to increased releases from intake has to be considered as well. Simply put, since the inception of that program, we released nearly twenty-two percent more inmates from intake. Those are inmates that we didn't have to process and house. Although we've seen an increase in the average daily population at the jail, it's important to understand that risk assessment and bail reform were never designed to reduce the inmate population. We thought it could be an artifact of that, but that was purely conjecture. Challenges persist with the judicial review of money bail. It is inconsistent, and those are being reviewed by the Supreme Court next month in a, in a joint meeting. I want to lay out some pros and cons of this risk assessment, just so the board is aware. The most obvious pro is that we have a better understanding of our inmate population and those who could be released regardless of their financial ability. If the risks they present can be mitigated through community supervision, so that's, that's an important piece. With the implementation of the risk assessment and the removal of the uniform bail schedule, the county has been in line with the national push and the reported injustices facing indigent offenders. A significant con is that any change in process can create delays. Historically, we've seen the medical reviews create delays in booking, new booking procedures that we implement, the physical plant when we changed it created delays. So all these have created delays. Ultimately, a workflow assessment from an uninvolved party, I think, would be the, would be the greatest benefit to understand how we process inmates through intake and if there's a, a better, faster way to do that. What we do know is that lack of bail amount at booking is causing additional work for civilian staff and in the booking process. That additional work equates for the need for an additional full-time employee twenty-four-seven, which represents additional FTEs to fill that position. Included in here is, I'll include this in every presentation, but it's just a slide kind of breaking down who's in the jail and what their, what their charge levels are. We have seen a, a little bit of an increase in felony charges as well as misdemeanor charges. And then the next one's our average daily population. I would note that because this is the second quarter reporting data, that we did have a decrease, a slight decrease, from November to December of almost one percent. That has all been erased in, in December and January. We're now averaging over eleven-hundred in our ADP every single day. So we went from that ten-seventy to closer to eleven-fifty. And we're, we're conducting some analysis right now to, to better understand what's causing that. But I can tell you that in one month, we had data that showed the Reno Police Department arrested a hundred-and-forty more people compared to the previous month. So again, when I talk about those increases in patrol staffing, I, that does equate to an increase in inmates in the jail. That is what I have. Be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you very much. That was interesting report, full of lots of information and unfortunately, very frightening. Commissioner Herman.
I just wanted to say, if I had a hat on, I'd take it off to you. I do not know how you do it. What you accomplished there is amazing, absolutely amazing. I have one question. And it may be a dumb question, but how does, how do we get compensated for what Reno brings there? I mean, as opposed to, I mean, we've got a lot of other inequities in the county, but that one seems to be one that I haven't been able to understand, how we got there.
Well, my thought is it's a, it's a very complex issue with a lot of history. You know, as you may be aware, this board quite some time, not this board, but a previous board, quite some time ago, moved to discontinue the, the payments that the Reno Police Department and Sparks Police Department put towards the consolidated jail. Now, that's a much deeper conversation that involves fiscal, fiscal equity study and a taxation argument that I am incapable of explaining. But I would just say that it's, that it's, it's something that's being talked about regularly amongst, amongst our executive staff, and I know that the board has, has questioned it as well. So I'd be happy to be involved in any of those conversations. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Commissioner Harton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Chief Deputy Green, I've got a couple of questions for you. I'll, I'll sort of take them from the, from the top. So the facility was built in nineteen eighty-seven per NRS. And I, I know that we have, you and I have talked about NRS two-eleven-oh-two-oh on a number of occasions. That, that makes us, the county commissioners supposedly responsible for the, the well-being of the, of the inmates. But what I have argued is, is that that, that piece of NRS did not contemplate the regional detention facility, of which, by the numbers that you've given us today, and I don't quite, and I'll, we'll come back to this, but I don't quite understand, forty-three percent are represented by Reno Police Department, thirteen by both Reno and Sparks, so that leaves another thirty-one percent of inmates coming from somewhere else. And so I, I, so let's, we'll, we'll start with in ninety-seven. The, the legislation that was created to envision this regional detention facility, how did it envision that it would be paid for? Do you know the answer to that, or is that something that Mr. Watzvial is going to have to answer for me?
Well, I-
And possibly research?
I can tell you that from my review of the older documents, that, that it was an agreement at the time amongst the, the two municipalities and the sheriff, well, the board, to create that regionalized jail, and that, and that each entity would pay into that to, to maintain and staff it.
Okay, and then you said, you said, and you gave no dates on this, that this board, the county commission, not, not the current commissioners, because I don't ever remember discontinuing, approving discontinuing payments from the two municipalities. I, that was nothing that came before us. If it was, I, maybe I was absent that day, because I-
No, correct. That, this was older. I don't have the documents in front of me. They can certainly be provided. We have them scanned into our system.
Yeah, so, so that's something that I'd like to look at. And basically, what I'd like to do ultimately, and I, I, you know, hate to be the, the party pooper in the, in the group, but what I'd like to do is I'd like to go back and separate the sheriff from the jail. In other words, I don't have a problem with the sheriff running the jail, but I don't believe that it was really ever contemplated in terms of a budget. And, and looking at indexing that cost, because it has gone up disproportionately, unfortunately. I mean, it, you know, we've, we've tried to index a number of things over the years, but, you know, the numbers at, at the jail have just climbed precipitously. And I mean, and, and that's probably not the right term, because it's normally used in a fall, but, but I mean, they've just gone crazy. You, you mentioned that twenty-one-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-five are the, are the number of inmates that we had, is that, was that last year?
Yeah, and that, that's who walked through the door. That's a, that's a tally of the total bookings.
Right, right. And, and so, again, forty-three percent was Reno.
Right.
Twenty-six combined was Sparks and Washoe County. Where's the other thirty-one percent? Where's that contribution coming from?
And I have the breakdown, I just didn't provide it because it starts getting down in the weeds. I was looking at the big players, but, you know, that includes the, the tribal police, parole probation.
Okay. Are we reimbursed for that thirty-one percent somehow? Do we get cost recovery for that?
The only ones that reimburse are federal agencies, and I believe the Bureau of Indian Affairs was just a federal agency, but-
Right, the BIA.
But otherwise, no. There's no reimbursement. You know, you got highway patrol, you got airport police, you got school police, you got, I mean, there's a myriad of agencies that, that book into that regional jail.
Okay, and this, and this does, this number, twenty-one-four-thirty-five, does not include Jan Evans?
No, 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 no. This is just the adult detention facility.
Right, right.
Absolutely.
Right, this is just, just the one facility. So, I mean, these are, these are questions that I think we need to delve into. And then I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little hazy on this. We do bill, the billing system is based on a co-pay, however, excludes chronic care issues. Where were those people getting care prior to entering our facility?
That's a difficult question to quantify. I mean, they could, there, there could be individuals that have private healthcare.
Why aren't we building, billing their private healthcare? I mean, if they've, if they've got a chronic issue, if they're, I'll use the example, if they're a transplant recipient, let's just say they have a, they have a kidney and they have to have immunosuppressants, which are very expensive, by the way. I have firsthand knowledge as to how expensive those drugs are. So if that's the case, they had to be getting those drugs somewhere, those immunosuppressants and, and- and there's a whole cocktail of drugs that they have to take on a daily basis just to stay alive. I guess the question is, and I'm not suggesting that we don't give them the care, but the real question is, and maybe this goes back to whomever we, you, decide is going to manage our healthcare, maybe we need to revamp our billing, because if someone goes into the facility that has insurance, we should be billing that insurance, especially if they're chronic.
I was with you for a while, and then I got brought up to speed on some other issues with that. And the first piece is that the people that do have insurance, a lot of times that insurance is discontinued when they're spending time in jail, because they're no longer employed. So that's one issue. The other issue is, when I brought up the medical, when I brought this up to our current medical provider, that was the example they gave me, was the two full-time employees for 200 and some odd patients at a hospital, and 70% of them got Medicaid. So you're talking about two full-time people just to deal with medical billing with insurance. And then, you know, is the jail medical facility an authorized provider? I mean, there's just a whole bunch of other issues. I would say, Commissioner, that the cost of medical care for the jail, the contracted cost annually excludes no medication, with the exception of medications related to hemophilia.
Okay.
So-
That's probably a very small number of the population.
It's very, very small. We've only had one inmate come in, and they came in with medicine from the street that we were able to verify, and we were able to continue to dose them with it.
Understood.
So I guess what I'm saying is that truly, if NAF Care, who's our current provider, they could bill the insurance company. I don't see the county getting a refund on that, because we contract a certain dollar amount every year with them to provide medical care, and all those costs are considered covered. So I don't know if that makes sense or not.
Yeah, no, I see where you're going with that. But I guess, I know numerous physicians' offices who don't do their own billing. They use a third-party billing agency because they don't have the staff, they don't have, and if you've got one letter, one digit, one space, one dash wrong in the coding, the system kicks it out, and it becomes a no-pay, and that can go months and months and months until somebody figured out, you know, where that error originated. And so consequently, a lot of physicians' offices use a third-party billing system, and it's even private contractors. I know people who just do it out of their homes, who are nothing more than billing agents for a number of agencies. So maybe that's something that we need to look at, because it, I mean, it comes back to cost recovery for us, and I'll end my thoughts with this. I still think we need to go back to the legislature. We need to talk to our policymakers that would be in control of this to say the jail itself needs to be separated out, and the costs associated with that need to be almost what I would consider a line item on the tax bill. No different than the Washoe County School District is. You know, have the detention facility as a line item on the tax bill. And it's not that the taxes would go up, it's just that we need to basically get that out of just a general budget, because the sheriff, you guys are just, it's costing us more and more and more and more. And the member agencies, there's a disproportionate number in terms of the member agencies, and some of those agencies that are giving us inmates, we need to have some cost recovery, whether it's Highway Patrol or whomever. ICE, or, well, actually, that would be a federal agency, so that wouldn't, we would get reimbursed for those inmates. But whomever, I mean, that's a, we have 31% that are not one of the three agencies, and really, we're only pushing in 12. So this is a longer conversation, and I'm probably as frustrated as you are.
Well, I appreciate your concerns, and that, you know, the discussion as to where the jail lands is obviously a bigger statewide issue. You know, as you know, the sheriff has certain mandates, and one of them is to run the county jail, so I think that would definitely have to be-
But, on that note, prior to 1987, the county jail, Reno and Sparks both had their own jail. Reno's was on Second Street, and Sparks was downtown on C Street.
True, and I don't know from history if that was a choice at the time for the municipalities to have their own detention facility, because I don't know that they were required, are required currently by statute to have that.
I see.
That might be a question for Mr. Watzvial.
Yes, no, for our legal, and we obviously need to do more work on this. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you, Commissioner Harton. I have a couple of questions. You said that a lot of the people who are, not a lot, but a percentage of the people who are being brought in from downtown Reno, possibly downtown Sparks, are people who are essentially nuisance problems, and they're being arrested and brought to the jail. Can the county jail release them?
That is a good question. We're in the process of asking the district attorney's office for a legal opinion on whether or not the sheriff can refuse an arrestee on a municipal code violation. We don't know the answer to that question, but we're looking into it. And in no way am I trying to bash the Reno Police Department or the Sparks Police Department. This isn't about that.
Well, they have a job to do too, but-
They do, and I can understand the need to clean up downtown. But when we get a wagon full of people, and four or five of them are there for trespassing in open containers that then have huge medical issues and mental health issues, and then we end up with a prolonged stay in jail, like I said, that 12% of our inmate population is nothing but a Reno muni charge, no other charges pending, and they've already made it through the risk assessment, and they're staying. So it's a problem.
And it's a perfect scenario if the arresting agency doesn't have to pay anything. So that's definitely something that I hope the district attorney is doing some quick and dirty research for you. You said that inmates are billed. How many of them pay?
I'll have to get that number. I know we, I want to say that 145,000 was what we recovered, but I'll have to double-check. I know that we have it broken down by percentage and dollar amount.
Okay, I'd be interested in what percentage are actually paying the bills that they get charged with. We don't charge other agencies for inmates, so we're sort of in a position of, there's no way to recoup funds for that. I have some serious concerns about the housing units that we, and where we're going to get the money to fix those housing units, because we have to have them. I mean, there's just not room inside of the jail itself to keep all of the inmates that we currently have. And I think it's, and this is something that maybe we need to, at some point, Mr. Manager, have an extensive discussion about, you know, sitting down with the sheriff about where we're going to head on this kind of stuff, because I am concerned that it's going to get worse with the growth, not better. I mean, we've seen growth, we've seen an increase already. We're going to have more people who are drunk and disorderly downtown. They're going to end up in our jail. You know, we're going to have, that's going to increase as our population increases. And so I think it's something that we're, at some point in time, going to have to say, okay, what are we going to do? Because we do, the way it's set right now, we have a responsibility. We run the jail, and we run it without charging anybody else other than the feds for it. So what are we as the county going to do to assure that we have someplace to put people who need to be jailed? And people who are just drunk and disorderly, you know, on Mayberry, they used to throw Otis in the jail and let him sleep it off overnight. It's a little difficult to do that when you're having to put him in a jail cell with people who might be violent, who might have a drug problem, who might whatever. And so, you know, it's not like the old days where you could just throw Otis in the corner and let him sleep it off. And so how are we as a growing 21st century community going to deal with this whole issue? So I think that, Mr. Manager, is a conversation that we probably need to have at some point in the future. Thank you very much for this report. Commissioners, is anybody else have anything? Commissioner Lucy, I don't see you on my list, but no. Okay, and I don't see any public comment, so I believe we need a motion to accept this report. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, please cast your vote. Motion carries, I believe. All right, and affirm your vote. Thank you very much. Detective, Chief Detective Green, I have to keep reminding, I have to add that chief in the beginning.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here today, and this is an excellent report. I'm old, what can I say? Please affirm your vote on the screen. Motion carries for, nothing, with, again, Commissioner Jung missing today for the rest of this afternoon. Okay, Mr. Manager, we are ready. I believe we've bypassed 13.
Correct. Item 13 has been removed from today's agenda. We are on to item 14, which is a public hearing item.
We'll open the public hearing.
This is item 14, second reading and adoption of an ordinance amending chapter 21 of Washoe County Code.
Madam Chair, I mean, Madam Clerk, will you please read the second reading for us?
Certainly, Madam Chair. If adopted, this will be ordinance number 1612, an ordinance amending chapter 21 miscellaneous and additional taxes of the Washoe County Code imposing an increased fee on the recording of certain documents by the county recorder with the proceeds used to provide legal services for abused and neglected children and providing for other matters properly relating thereto. This was previously issued bill number 1796.
Okay. I don't see any public comment. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Harton.
I would move to adopt ordinance number 1612.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, please cast your vote and affirm your vote on the screen. Motion carries for, nothing, again with Commissioner Jung missing. And we will close the public hearing. Mr. Manager.
Madam Chair, there is no need for item 15, which was the possible closed session for labor negotiation discussions. So it takes us to item 16, which is public comment.
Okay, I do have public comment.
Tammy Hiltstill, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee, for the record. Back to Face the State. It was stated that there was a freakishly large several storms creating the flooding. That is a semi-truthful comment. There's overdevelopment, which causes stormwater runoff because of the building in the retention areas that were naturally holding water before going straight to the lake. Also with overdevelopment becomes over, or excess affluent water. Both the city of Reno and Washoe County sewer plants for January and February, per Nevada Department of Environmental Protection, were over their permitted amount. Washoe County's was at one, between 1.1 and 1.3 million gallons a day, and you're only permitted for .5 million gallons a day. That's a big difference, and that's a lot of water going into that lake. It was also spoke about yesterday, or also spoke on Face the State, that there were 10 residents, which before had been stated here, for the record, there were nine. And I have spoken as a committee to all the residents out there, and we only know of six. So we would like to have a record and see the official record of the residents that are accepting the buyout. And then also, yesterday at my home, I had the city of Reno, John Flansburgh there, and we discussed what was happening out there. And city of Reno is actually moving forward for actual flood mitigation plans and trying to control the lake, where Washoe County is not showing anything like that. They're also talking about different ways of handling their affluent water instead of pumping it all into a lake. It's kind of interesting, Washoe County wants to buy out homes that are in a floodplain, but then turn around and allow a developer to turn and build in that same floodplain and build his property up so that my property, which is out of the floodplain, will be flooded. So you can't have it two ways. You can't sit there and want all this money and then turn around and do something else. So the two things that I'm looking at is, first of all, it's time for you guys to really start paying attention to your floodplains before permitting. 2009 building codes need to be updated to the 2017 flood, because obviously, the 2009 didn't work. The one-for-one or the two-for-one is not good enough for building in floodplains. And also, I would like a formal list of the residents that are taking the buyout. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no further public comments, so we will bring it back to the Board. Mr. Manager.
Next item is Commissioner Manager's announcements. I have none.
Okay. Commissioners, anybody have anything? I see none, so we are adjourned.